Just one, the presentation of the Congressional Medals on Saturday went without a hitch and it was a wonderful ceremony. We probably had two or 300 people there and that was just a really nice ceremony. I don't think people understand that that came all the way from Congress and those are the first two to ever receive those in Wyoming. So it was a pretty fantastic thing to witness.
I agree. Thank you, MPO Public Participation Plan Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By virtue of our participation in the MPO and being somewhat the lead agency, we have the opportunity to participate in the Public Participation Plan. And accordingly, are at the point where we need further insight from council potentially and reporting us to its status. And so with that, I'll turn the tone to Ms. Becker.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I am going to turn this privilege over to our MPO Supervisor Jeremy Yates and his team because they have worked for the last several months with our consultants to put together phenomenal plans. So Jeremy?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. So in October, the MPO decided to update our Public Participation Plan. Public Participation Plan is one of the governing documents for the MPO and it's required by federal statute as part of the operations of the MPO. It's to ensure like, this is one of the central goals of the MPO, the broad public involvement and outreach in planning for transportation projects. So in October, we hired HDR Consulting. We've been working on the plan. We hosted an online public meeting, done a bunch of research on the backend of the local demographics and outreach techniques. And then we're here to present the plan for you now. We're putting out, this plan has to be open for public comment for 45 days. So that will start tomorrow at an event at Gruner Brothers because we're the MPO, we can host events at Gruner Brothers. You can't, but you can come and we'd love to see you all. So this, after which we'll institute final comments, work with some of our funding agencies like YDOT gets more comments and produce the plan. I'm just going to introduce Katie and Tara and they'll walk us through the work they've done so far and then we'll take any questions you guys have. Thank you. Now, I'll go sit over here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. My name's Tara Battali, I'm with HDR Engineering. And this is Katie Angel, she's my deputy project manager. So we were hired, as Liz and Jeremy said, to update the Public Participation Plan. And the presentation today is really just an abbreviated version of the quite thick document you received in your packet. And just so you know, as you review that, one of our tasks during the 45 days is to pull that down into what we're calling a citizen's handbook. So something that will be a little bit easier for council, MPO staff and our citizens to reference. It's also some of the advice we received from our federal partners as well, an early review of the plan. So we'll walk through this, open to any questions and comments you may have. Please interrupt me if there's anything that's unclear as we go through. So the agenda for today is to go through what a Public Participation Plan is. We've been saying that word so often, if you say it 10 times fast, you'll stumble a few times. But, and then the feedback we have received to date, community demographics as well as new engagement tools that we hope will be really interesting for the city and the MPO. And then next steps, we've talked a little bit about that for the 45-day comment period. So what is the Public Participation Plan? It really is an inclusive plan that will last for about five years. It was last updated in 2014 and our goal here is to refresh that. It'll include the goals for participation, so what do we want to make sure everything we do throughout the next five years on MPO projects meets those goals? What are the federal requirements, both Title VI and other nondiscriminatory requirements from our FHWA partners? Census and socioeconomic data, so how can we use demographic information and community characteristic data that we pull from ESRI and the Tapestry Tool within ESRI to better understand the Casper area? So we can make smarter and more cost-effective decisions moving forward. Education and input tools, so we not just want, we don't want to just educate the public on the great things that the MPO is doing, but also get meaningful feedback and input as we progress through projects and programs. We're going to talk about some outreach strategies. Again, if you can come tomorrow night, I think you're going to see some of those in action. We're really excited to showcase those. And then in the appendices of the plan, you'll see a number of examples that we've used, both for the input on the PPP, but also some templates and examples to use moving forward. So how did we update the plan? Katie and I's mantra before we gear up and doing anything and making any recommendations is doing our research. And we think that's really important. Planners, engineers, you gather data, you do a ton of research, then you make informed decisions. And we want to do the same as it relates to public participation. So in anticipation for the project, we analyzed the existing communication materials, methods and processes that the MPO is using. We looked at website, how easy is it to navigate through your website? How ADA accessible is it? What color tones are you using that might be hard for those with visual impairment? We went through a variety of those tools and analyzed that, so we took a really critical look at that. We also conducted stakeholder listening sessions. Some of the members who are part of that are in this room today. And that partnering session really helped us to gather information from your city and MPO partners. What has been working, what hasn't? What are some areas of improvement that the MPO can consider moving forward? We also reviewed social media chatter. So we did social listening, as we call it, and that really allows us to understand what the public is saying about Casper, MPO and the projects surrounding it. We also examined those socioeconomic and demographic tools as well and trends, identified new tools. And then we held an online public meeting. I hope some of you were able to participate in that. But it's a virtual meeting where people can, at any time during the day, for a series of a couple weeks, join an online forum, read through the information regarding the plan and provide input. So it really goes to the people rather than forcing them to come to us. Of that online meeting, we asked two really critical questions. How do you prefer to participate in future efforts? And what was really exciting for Katie and I to see is online meetings, like this platform, which was the one they were using in the time that they answered this question, had about 36 responses. Nearly everybody who participated in the online meeting was supportive of that platform itself. Closely followed by online and digital public surveys and in-person public meetings. We certainly don't want to discount that in this digital age. We know that in-person connection is really important for your projects, but we were excited to see that virtual tools were at the forefront. How do you prefer to receive information? No surprise here, email certainly takes the lead, followed by website and social media. So we really want to be sure we remember in our recommendations that digital tools are going to be the first and foremost way that people get info. Mailer, way last place. They're expensive, they don't always hit the people that we want to hit, but still a tool that some folks would like to use. Our stakeholder listening sessions, they're essentially interviews, so to speak, but there's really two motives of why we do this and I brought them up a little bit earlier. One is to get information. We want to really sit there as a facilitator to understand what's working and not. But it's also a way to continue to build partnerships with your agencies, both locally and regionally. So it's really that double-edged sword there where we want to make sure that we're building good relationships and getting good feedback. So you'll see the list of the agencies we talked to, YDOT, City of Mills, Wyoming Independent Living Resources, Platte River Trails, Visit Casper, Town of Evansville and the Citizens Advisory Committee. And we really tried to not just focus on municipal partners or other jurisdictions. We wanted to have as diverse of a subset of stakeholders. And this is just the start of it. We're encouraging the MPO to continue these partnering and listening sessions over the next five years before the next update to maintain those good relationships and make sure that maybe some of the new tools are implemented more broadly through our partner groups or that they're adjusted for if they're not quite working. And some of the things we learned, the strengths, organization makes sense on how the MPO is organized within the city and they're diligent about obtaining public feedback. So there really is that passion to get that public feedback. Opportunities, educate the public on MPO and their work. So just make the public understand a little bit more about what the mission is for the MPO and how they fit into the city network. Weaknesses, learning curve associated with funding of MPO projects. It's a little complicated when we talk about how the MPO gets funded and so that kind of ties into that education piece as well. Threats, I think we're all experiencing in a post-COVID or soon-to-be-post-COVID world, that funding again is a critical threat and issue for the longevity of MPO projects and programs. So the more we can have an inclusive public participation plan, the goal is to get and solicit additional federal funding when maybe there's not a local or state match to that funding effort. And this is where the really exciting stuff took place in our research and that was understanding socioeconomic behaviors. We wanted to have this citizen engagement plan that we're launching here to be data-driven. So we wanted to make sure that we understand the unique subsets of the Casper area. And this information represents communities that share common experiences and significant demographic traits. We also understand that just because you might live in Bar None, which has a life mode of middle ground, it doesn't mean that you're going to match every characteristic of that life mode. But it does give us a pretty broad understanding of the community. What makes them tick? How do they like to be engaged with, generally speaking? What are their socioeconomic trends? What are their buying power? Where do they like to go spend their time? Those are the types of things that we understand through this tool and it allows us to make informed decisions on engagement as well. So I'm going to flip back and forth to these two slides as we understand the three life modes in Casper. So the life mode groups represent markets that share those common experiences. And the first being rustic outposts. So that's the smallest of the three main life groups here, primarily focused around the city of Mills. And they're going to be the outdoorsy, sports enthusiasts. They're, one of their key engagement tactics is pop-up events at sports parks. Could be to have a pop-up event at the David Street Station, for example. Meeting people where they are, where they're recreating, having pop-up events along trail systems. Those have been really successful for us in the past and allows to get input in a non-traditional way. We also have the family landscapes, so that's going to be the orange on the left part. So the second largest group. And they're going to be a little bit more of the traditionalists. So these community groups are going to read newspapers. They're going to be the ones who might appreciate an in-person meeting over a digital platform. They prefer to get engaged through their local publications by way of advertising in a traditional way. For the event tomorrow, we did two printed ads in the Casper Start Tribune. So that allows for that inclusive touch point with this type of life mode. And then the largest within the MPO area is the middle ground. So that's going to be the bulk of your Casper area. And they're online all the time, so they're going to be those digitally savvy people. They're going to prefer to get their information and news through social media primarily or through some other electronic form. So the benefit of understanding this is that we can save time and money by customizing our app plan. So if we have a public participation plan, like we're doing now, or another big, large MPO program, there's no sense in having 20 public meetings at a school, elementary school, gymnasium, for example, if it's really only going to capture and have a big return on investment here. So let's think about having two or three public meetings in this area and then really pushing the social media surveys and online digital surveys to the eastern part of the area. So we're going to save time and money by not having five consultants and a bunch of staff with a whole load of boards going around to 15 or 20 public meetings around the area. We can save that resource and that funding and push it digitally in the areas where we know that's how they like to engage. So hopefully that makes sense in how we use socioeconomic data in these life modes to make informed decisions. And all of that's outlined in more detail in the PPP draft.
Thank you. Was it Tara?
Yes.
Thank you, Tara. I'm just curious to note, the orange seems to represent mostly our words. So I was just curious what, you know, factors, you know, what makes that area different?
So it's the way ESRI pulls the data. So we have Tapestry is again the sub-tool within ESRI. And they pull a whole bunch of traditional census data and a lot of other public surveys that might exist within our public realm. And ESRI and Tapestry like mashes that all together, understands this particular area and then matches it with up to 72 personas within their database. So they're taking these key traits on average that happen in this area and match it to a life mode that's generally representative of that community. Again, there's going to be anomalies and outliers in that it's certainly not a perfect science of data. It's not going to be your true, you know, scientific census data, so to speak, but that's how that data is pulled. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, it makes sense how you said it. I don't know if I'm comprehending.
Yeah, it's a whole probably four-hour session. We could certainly provide you information on, but again, it's just to help us make better decisions for what we see as the general characteristic of that area. But it doesn't mean your online meeting and your social media wouldn't hit these folks. It just means maybe the online should really be focused in the areas we know or maybe more savvy based on our data.
I guess this, I'll be perfectly honest, it confused me. Your older population, you say, is exclusively in Mills. And, but we have a huge older population. So if you did scale down, you know, town hall meetings only in Mills, you're going to miss out on everybody else. And because they're not on the internet, they're not in this millennial area of which you've got is the TIL. So I guess, so how did?
So the blue is actually the rustic outpost, so they're going to be more of the sports enthusiasts. So I wasn't implying that they were the older population. Family landscapes is the orange. That's worse, we can pull more specific data for you based, I mean, we have hundreds and hundreds of pages of data that we analyze to then come up with this. That doesn't mean that these are just all the aging population and that there's none over here. We're just saying that the orange, based on the census data we've pulled and the community characteristics within the ESRI life modes, the majority of the family landscapes, which is the orange, tend to be more traditionalists in the way they want to engage. But I, but it's not, the point is it's not a one-size-fits-all outreach plan based on the information we know about the community characteristics and the socioeconomic behaviors within the Casper area.
And I was going to say too, that we outline in our plan, kind of an overlay of general census data too. So seeing, you know, these socioeconomic behaviors, how people are getting their information, where they're going, combining that with, you know, the different age groups, minorities, people that don't have internet access, the aged census data, like all that type of census data overlaying with this as well. So there are nuances between the two of them and just figuring out. And I feel like with the partnerships, that's where those conversations are the most important is, does this make sense for your communities? If so, why?
How many people were polled for this?
So this is using existing demographic information in ESRI. So it's a backend database system that's used to pull this. And again, it's not meant to say we're only going to have in-person meetings in the west part of the Casper area. It just allows us to understand more about what will, what will have a higher return on investment. But depending on the project, the scope and budget of the project, the input you need, it's a variety. So you'll see as we gear into our recommendations, when we analyzed the Casper area demographics, as Katie said, overlayed with the life modes, our recommendation is to blend it, is to have in-person touchpoints, whether that be through pop-ups or traditional in-person meetings with digital savviness as well. The trouble that we've been seeing within cities similar to Casper's size is that we haven't progressed to meet people where they are, especially in an online setting. And so this data just shows and helps us make those decisions in a more informed way rather than just having 20 public meetings because that's what we've always done and that's what we should do and we have the same five to 10 people coming to those. We really want to try to diversify our engagement to get more meaningful input from those who have historically not participated in transportation projects. Does that make sense? Happy to dive in more, there's a lot in the PPP draft as well for you to read in. So the point here is that it's not one-size-fits-all. It should be customized. So in the PPP, you'll see our recommendations for public involvement plans, which would be required, what we are recommending be required in every RFP that the MPO releases. Within those public involvement plans, in theory, the consultant team or the MPO staff is going to be using this data and this information to customize that PIP. That makes sense. Somehow Siri was like excited about consultants. Thank you, Siri. So the public involvement plans are the subsetted plans of the PPP for each individual project or program. That's customized based on scope, budget, schedule, et cetera. So as Katie had mentioned, we also looked at how to be more inclusive in our participation under Title VI and nondiscriminatory regulations as part of our process. So in the draft plan, you're going to see more detail on Title VI and those requirements. They are a federal requirement, but in our opinion, and I know you all would agree with this, it's also the right thing to do in trying to find ways to have inclusive participation, again, with groups that maybe have historically not participated in our projects or programs. So persons with disability, I know that you all have developed a council for people with disabilities, which is great to allow them a seat at the table and a voice. And that's been really successful, especially in transportation projects as we look at ADA accessibility within our transportation network and the multimodal use within a city like yours. Households below the poverty level, that's obviously important. We want to make sure we're socially equitable in our transportation planning process on the technical side, but also on the outreach side as well. Households with no internet access, this is another data set that you're going to see in the PPP in more detail. This is really important. If we have a project that's just focused in one part of the MPO area, could just be a few blocks or a small neighborhood, if we know that the data tells us that they have limited internet access traditionally, right? Or generally speaking, that would be the place we'd want to definitely have an in-person event or an in-person public meeting to meet them where they are and to be able to get them access to the process. And then our aging population, we analyzed that as well. So that data is in the PPP and minority population as well, especially when we talk about language needs and the need to translate materials based on the minority or language barrier that might be within your community. So the new public participation recommendations in the plan, we really, again, as I mentioned earlier, have a two-pronged approach when we talk about engagement tools and that's education and input. So using these tools both as an education element, but also as a way to gather input as well. So paid social media advertisements, again, huge return on investment for a really small amount. For a Colorado DOT project, we did paid, statewide paid social media advertisements. We did it for YDOT as well for their STIP online meeting that Katie was managing. We did paid media advertisements, less than 500 bucks, skyrocketed our engagement by about 300%. So it's huge, it goes a long way and it's easy. Those online meetings are easy to access and that paid advertisement just helps in that. Comment maps, those are, can both be an in-person tool as well as a digital one where people can interact on a transportation plan within the MPO's scope and be able to make comments about what improvements, for example, they want to see. Live polling, if you haven't used Mentimeter, we use the heck out of that all the time. It's a great tool when you're facilitating stakeholder workshops or other agency events as well as public meetings. So it just allows you to get quick and easy data through a live polling. Street fairs, we've talked a little bit about that. Pop-up events are another great tool. I know the MPO has hosted a number of those in the past and those are great examples of where you go to where people are already gathering to get input. Online events, we've talked about that, was successful in this effort to gather information. Webinars, so, you know, taking an in-person public meeting and making it in a virtual setting where you have a panel of speakers, that's great too. So the benefits to the Casper area and its citizens. The benefit of this plan and a really solid public participation plan with those public involvement plans as a subset of those per project, the benefit really is building lasting partnerships with agencies, stakeholders and the public. It also satisfies federal requirements. But I know that the city and the MPO wants to do more than just check the box for federal requirements. So we think that this plan really will do that. Saves time and budget. We're blending digital and in-person tools to make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck based on the socioeconomic and community characteristic data we have. It mitigates for social and political risk, because this sounds really scary and it can be. In our world today, the public's really craving a two-way conversation. They want to have a conversation with all of you on a regular basis and they're also watching everything you do all the time. I'm sure you all know that. It's, they're very, very much paying attention and making sure that we're being good stewards of the money that's being used and that the projects are also inclusive in nature. So by having a solid PPP, you're really going to mitigate for any sort of risk from a social perspective. Create citizen support. So whether you're gearing up for potential local tax increases or ballot measures or looking to advocate for additional federal funding, having citizens behind you in support of it is going to go a long way when you go for additional funding in particular. For your citizens, this engagement plan really provides diverse opportunities to give input on projects. It's not necessarily an in-person meeting like we've always done, but maybe it's that and an online meeting, maybe it's that and a social media polling tool. It also meets people where they are to make it more convenient for them. Going to the brewery tomorrow because we know people are going to be there. We know they're going to hopefully generally be happy. They're going to end up wanting to hopefully join us in making some input on the PPP. Creates excitement about community improvements while also bringing people together. So it shows that the city and the MPO are really trying to listen first, gather input and make informed decisions on their plans. Provides economic vitality and access to more things. So by having a really solid involvement and participation plan throughout any of your programs and projects, we're really going to help the public get access to more things. Healthcare, social services, entertainment and recreation as well. And then it's a chance to educate them on how hard you all are working with their tax money, how it's being used in their communities and what you're doing with the money that's being invested locally in the MPO's case, particularly for transportation projects. Next up, public comment period till June 11th. So we'll be taking those comments and incorporating them. We'll also be doing more internal review, fact-checking, copy-editing, all of those things to make sure that it's nice and ready for formal adoption. We'd love for you all to come out tomorrow night at Gruner Brothers to participate in some interactive awards that we have. So it's a bit more of a traditional in-person meeting, but with some flair, as Katie and I say. So hopefully you all can join us. With that, will take any more questions, comments? I know that was a lot and it was quick and the plan's big, but we're here during this whole time if you need us.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity. It's been really wonderful to work with the MPO staff and Liz and we're just so thankful for your time and appreciate you having us here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know what to do with this. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the 40th anniversary of the Ford Wyoming Center. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. It was brought to my attention, and I have to confess, I was ignorant of this amazing statistic that the Event Center has been around for 40 years now. And actually, this coming year will be 40 years or whatever. So the request before you this evening is whether or not you would be willing to join others who are putting up funds to try to celebrate that anniversary throughout the next 12 months with regard to heightened awareness and events and a whole raft of things that would communicate to the public and hopefully broader outside of our community, the wonderful services available at the Event Center. The agency that of course is spearheading this effort in partnership with the Ford Wyoming Center is Visit Casper. And we are fortunate to have Ms. Kaufman here with us tonight to walk us through what it is that they're looking for from the city by way of our partnership.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, Members of Council. I feel like I just was in front of you a few short weeks ago to talk about Proud to Host the Best. So thank you for your to talk about Proud to Host the Best. So thank you for your time. I will try to use it as wisely and as quickly and as possible. So what I thought we would do is maybe take a quick trip down memory lane as far as the Event Center's concerned. So one of the neat things as we started talking about the 40th anniversary of the Event Center is, uh, there's a whole library of information in the vault. I don't know where the vault is in your facility. Where's the vault? Does anyone know?
Don't tell her.
Because you don't know what I'm going to find in that vault. But anyways, in the vault that no one knows where it is, there is an epic amount of information and history specifically around this facility amongst probably many other things. So this is actually a picture of the groundbreaking of the Casper Event Center, Ford Wyoming Center, May 7th of 1980. So originally I had heard that the Event Center was the first One Sent project that was funded, but that's actually not true. So does anybody know what year the One Sent was instituted or the first time it was voted in?
Seventy-six?
Close.
Seventy-eight.
Other way.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four. That's true. So anybody want to guess what the first projects were in 1974 when the One Sent passed? One of them was City Hall, Fire Station, and Hall of Justice. Okay? So the Event Center did come a little bit later down the road. Uh, so, uh, in 1980 is when this project actually got off the ground. So from 1980 to 1982, it was built. Uh, total construction cost was $22 million, and it was 100% funded by the time the facility opened on April 17th of 1982. So one thing, as I dive through the photos, is I don't have comments on all of them, but, uh, I did look up the unemployment statistics from in the 1980s, both nationally and what was going on in our community. So in 1982, our unemployment rate in Natchitochi County was 6.1%. In 1983, it was 10.1%. So you can imagine the people who thought this facility was a really good idea 40 years ago were probably sweating bullets when the economy was really, really bottoming out, right? We all know about the big bust of the eighties. But here we stand 40 years later, and this facility's had a tremendous impact on our community. So we can only thank the people who had the vision all those years ago to bring something like that to our landscape. So I just wanted to share some older photos because it's really, like, it's nostalgic to see how they built, you know, we all have walked up those steps at the Event Center one time or another. Uh, so an elevator somewhere sometime might be due, but who knows? That's probably a 50 years. Uh, but it's just really neat to see. So you just, like, we walk in and we just assume that that facility's just always been there, but it took a lot of effort. I particularly liked the vehicles from the late 1970s, and, and the roof was red back then, so. So this was actually from opening day, and I was curious if anybody in the room was there. I noticed that this said World's Toughest Rodeo, and we did not host CNFR 40 years ago, so I was curious if that was Central Wyoming Fair and Rodeo or if anybody happened to know. No? Okay, well, we'll have to look into that. If somebody lets me in the vault, I will look for the answer. Okay, so here's the facility today, right? So this is one of our world famous events, right? CNFR generates about $1.9 million every year for us in our community. Uh, and kudos to the city of Casper, signed a contract extension through 2027. So that's a neat event for us. Obviously shows the versatility of a facility. Uh, this is Dancing with the Stars. So I think they usually have 600 or 700 people there. So again, it's something that's fundraising, so there's a lot of fundraisers that take place at this, uh, facility as well. Uh, as we all know, the state tournaments are critical to us, and it shows again the versatility, whether it's wrestling or volleyball or basketball. Uh, this is a, I don't know if this is the art symposium or it's, I don't think it's the Women's Expo, but some kind of a trade show that, again, shows the versatility of the facility. This is a short clip of a time lapse of state band, state marching band that we host. Anybody been to one of these events? Good, I have not. So this is the first time I've actually seen what monster trucks looks like in the Event Center. I was like, woo, that's amazing. I'm going next to a hot dog. Okay, so concert. Again, I think this is, uh, Beer and Bacon. Brad, does that look right?
It is.
Booze and Bacon? Okay, obviously another concert for us. And then the facility. So really, the point of this presentation tonight is to just show the longevity in our community, how, I can't imagine a world that I live in where I live in this place and the Event Center doesn't exist. It hosts high school graduations, the high school tournaments. It really is critical not only to our quality of life, but to tourism and for people having things to do while they're here or recruiting businesses. So I just wanted to have a conversation. It's not anything that Visit Casper sent around and said, ma'am, we're looking for something to do. But the truth is, you have a facility under your leisure service division that is critical to all of us, right? It touches us all in some way. So we said, couldn't we go out and raise funds and have a collaborative effort to market the Event Center and celebrate this milestone anniversary? So I actually presented to Economic Development Joint Powers Board, and they turned me down. But the cool part about them turning me down is that my chairman, Paul Bertollio, was actually on that call. And he probably spent five minutes talking about how everybody in this community has written on the backs of the city for decades about the economic impact that this facility brings, and we all just enjoy it, right? And the city actually has to be the one that carries the subsidy. So right then and there on the call, he said, you know what? Even if EDJPB does not, uh, Natchitochi County's in for 15,000. So the county wants to participate in this. Visit Casper Board just gave a thumbs up to do 15,000. I know Spectra's going to look for some ways to generate some revenue to the tune of around 20. So tonight I'm standing here because it is your facility. We are tremendously grateful for the impact that it has, but I, we could use some financial support to spend the year celebrating the milestone. So in the memo that you have in your packet, I'm asking for $50,000, and I would take any questions. That's from the city of Casper.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Brooke, for being here and Brad for being here as well. Um, I guess my question was, uh, the request for 50,000, that's the same amount requested for the city's contribution to Proud to Host the Best, and, uh, I don't, I'm preaching in the choir for you, uh, you know, to you as far as the economic impact of that is concerned. I guess for this one though, I was a, I guess I didn't know what was the purpose other than celebration of the facility? Would this, um, you know, celebration also be aiming to reach people that haven't, you know, um, gone to Casper Event Center events before, or, uh, you know, is it intended to increase attendance or anything at all, or is it, uh, mostly just sort of a celebration of the history of the facility? I think.
So thank you for asking that, Councilman Gammara, uh, both. So one is, actually, we partnered with the city in December of last year to help you deploy some CARES funding to create awareness and drive engagement around your leisure service facilities. So we set kind of a baseline about what people thought about the Event Center. We also asked about Hogdon as well. So I think two things we're looking for this year is, one is to continue to improve sentiment around the facility. So there is a lot of talk and chatter about it's on the tax roll, it doesn't generate anything. So I think a lot of people don't understand the value and what the city puts up to generate that economic impact. And then two, certainly to drive engagement. So we definitely, I can't promise you coming off 2020 that we're going to, we're going to see a robust ticket year, right? I, I think that would be crazy for me to stand here and say, I'm going to increase your ticket sales by 30%, but we certainly want to measure your engagements similar to what we did with CARES, work on some of that PR stuff and get you some placements that are pretty critical to just creating that awareness and goodwill around the facility. Great question.
Uh, Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Uh, this is a relevant question, but more of maybe a couple of thoughts. One, um, is it, and I think you can answer this to me, not in, in private, but we've had this conversation that we can use CARES funding for something like this. So I think it's, it's also very important to understand too that we could use that for an economic impact for our community. So I think CARES funding would work, and I think that, and I think we could, I think the city could, if we're using CARES funding, I think we could do 60 or 65. That's what I think. Um, and I think we should consider that. For what this has done for our community, that's kind of where I'm kind of.
Councilmember Pollock.
Thanks. I, I, I agree with Councilman Checo. This is a conversation we did have at EDJPB, and it, it didn't really fit the mission there, but it absolutely fits our mission here, um, with this, um, with this facility. To me, this is, this is just an amazing marketing opportunity for the city to market our facility that we're not going to have for 10 years. I mean, I suppose we could celebrate the 41st anniversary, the 42nd anniversary, but I don't quite have the same sort of, uh, uh, romanticism that the 40th anniversary has. And so to me, you seize this type of opportunity to highlight the history, but to also, um, to tee up some excitement uh, in the community and beyond the community, um, to market this facility. And so, so to me, this is, it's, it's mostly just a, I mean, not, not only to recognize and to celebrate, but to leverage this anniversary to the future benefit of the facility and of, to, to the city, um, for this facility. So to me, it is in our wheelhouse and it, you know, it is our facility. We want, we want funds and seats, uh, this, this season and next season. And so the more we can kind of build on what already, if I am understanding the survey correctly, there already is quite a lot of positive sentiment towards the Event Center. So I think the momentum is in our favor. Putting some funding behind it can help solidify that and, um, you know, really, uh, use this anniversary as a, as a mechanism to do that.
Councilwoman Nell.
Thank you. I'm, I'm in complete agreement, but I also think it's important, I, I did read your, what you sent us, and I believe this is a year-long, um, uh, campaign, if you will, so it's not just a one-shot thing. It'll be, this money will go to promoting it for an entire year. And, uh, lastly, I think we need to get off the Event Center and start calling it the Ford Center. They paid a lot of money for it. We need to, we need to make sure we're using the appropriate verbiage. I'm sure the Ford people would like it.
Councilwoman Engbrich.
Where are you going to be advertising and promoting? This is exclusively in Natchitochi County, Wyoming, other states?
So for us, it'll be regionally, but some of the focus actually will be on people who live here. So one of the things that we're really, we've talked a lot about is how do you take the Event Center to the people? So nearly every celebrity who's come through our community has been at the Event Center, and they've got shadow boxes of tickets and programs and pamphlets, and it's really kind of this celebrity-esque type thing. So we'd like to do pop-up bar shows at the NIC and 321 and get a lot of other facilities involved. So I think where you're going to see us really do that outreach is on that PR front, and that's where we got some big wins for the city when we did that CARES promotion with you two.
Is it, is any of the money going to be used to maybe bring in some of the acts that possibly played maybe in the early eighties or anything of that nature?
So we've, we've talked about what potential might look like, uh, but not necessarily specifically to the acts. No, it'd be really facility.
Okay.
And Councilman Gammara, I did ask the city manager if I could ask for 200,000, but we said, I'll not give you. You're welcome, Mr. City Manager. I just wanted you to know it wasn't just the standard. We keep coming for 50.
Well, there is a common theme when you show up here, though.
I know, I know. It feels too close.
And it comes with $50,000 right there.
It seems to have the same tag every time.
Yeah, it's too close to come back. I know.
The vault, the vault is definitely a note for Ms. Kaufman.
Mr. Zoom in.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Brooke, if, if, if indeed you're looking at some intensive marketing and so forth as a part of this, this buy, that looks like will be in the neighborhood of almost $125,000, can you give us a feel, um, beyond what you've included in your memo that, that we could understand what you'd be purchasing as well?
Yeah, so a lot of it's going to be like video storytelling. So everybody in here has their first concert or their first event at the Casper Event Center, or how the facility has touched them. And that could be from a staff perspective, it could be from a resident perspective, it could be from a partner perspective. So we want to do a lot of vid- video and digital storytelling so that we can capture that. Uh, we also want to do, in partnership, the Event Center does this, the big ticket giveaway. So they're already in that right now, so how do we drive some lift behind that? Uh, we also, that robust PR effort, we want to create some commemorative branding and then work with some potential local makers. That, there's products that people can engage and buy. They're like, yay, it's the one year, right? This nostalgic thing. So a whole slew of different things, Carter, partnering with the Casper Store Tribune to develop a program. I think that's where some industry might get involved, is where they say, congratulations, Ca- congratulations, Ford Wyoming Center for being in the market 40 years, things like that. So we tried to touch a lot of people in a lot of different ways, and I'm happy to share that after.
Councilmember Pollock.
I think the, one of the cool things about, um, what you're just describing, Brooke, is that while we're marketing this facility, we're marketing our whole community. That's, so this is an opportunity for, for Casper at large to market itself via this exciting anniversary for, um, the Ford Wyoming Center, because as we know, when people come to an event there, they don't just go there and, and depart, they're, they're experiencing our, our, our community. And so to me, it's a, it's a win for the whole community, and marketing it as such as a way, you know, when we're getting PR, if we're getting placement in a, in a regional publication or, or something like that, all that does is elevate our, our status as a community outside the community. And, um, to me, that is what we need for a post-COVID rebound, uh, for our, for our community at large. So this is just a nice lever, I think, for us to pull to, to support the community at large.
Councilwoman Nell.
Thank you. Well, Brooke and I had a conversation yesterday, I think it was, right? And one of our biggest challenges as a city when it comes, especially subsidies and the Event Center, is getting our own people in the place. I mean, we have some amazing acts that come through here, and, and I've been to them, and there might be, you know, 1,600 people in there when there should be 3,800, uh, for no other reason than people are just not engaging or getting involved. So the advertising behind this being regional is really going to touch our own people. And that's literally what it's there for, is to service our people. So we've got to find a way to get people in the seats, and this seems like an extremely effective way with a bunch of partners helping us to do that. So, uh, for me, it's, it's an absolute no-brainer, and, and I didn't realize we could use CARES funding. That really makes it an easy decision for me personally, so.
Councilwoman Gammara.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in regards to the CARES funding, I'm curi- i- is that CARES funding that we wouldn't be able to use for other purposes, or is it CARES funding that would be eligible for other uses and we'd be instead using it for this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Gammara, thank you for that question. Um, y- you will, you will have a budget that, that comes forward here in a few weeks that, um, unless you tell me to, will not be supplemented by CARES funding reserves, if you will, that we have on hand, outside of a project of this nature. Um, so, so I, I, I wouldn't say that if we spend this money, we won't be able to do X, Y, and Z, because right now, we, we really just have it in place as kind of a stopgap measure, and, and we'll go through this in the budget discussion in a lot more detail, so that if other shoes drop financially in, in the community, we'll have those dollars to rely upon should we need to, uh, you know, to back up operations, whatever that might be. Hopefully never, but in the event that something really, really goes wrong, so.
Councilmember Pollock.
Uh, oh, um, is there a time limit? I know that there was a time limit for some of the CARES, like funding initially. I don't know, like, some of the subsequent, uh, funding rounds. Is, does that money, is that, what, is forever? Do we have to spend it by a certain time? What, where's that at now?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pollock, the, the, uh, the fact is, with respect to the nature of the dollars that we were able to collect, which, uh, it actually included two, two separate characteristics, if you will. One of which indeed had to be spent by the end of the calendar year last year, and we accomplished that. The other portion, which is the larger portion, was really a reimbursement for costs that we incurred throughout the pandemic season. And so those dollars, in my opinion, are available to be used. I'm a little reticent that once we get through the first year and we see what audits take place, and we see the character of those audits and their findings and whatnot with our neighbors and other communities around the country. I'm, I'm reluctant to commit them to anything at this point in time, un- unless you would direct me to do so. Uh, and, and so, um, I don't see the same rules being applied to a certain timeline to spend those dollars by.
Councilwoman Nell.
Thank you, Mayor. We, we also, as a council, have a, a responsibility when we are spending money to make sure that we are benefiting our community and doing things. And it seems to me that the return on investment that we get from the Event Center, um, is already fantastic for our community regardless of the subsidy. Um, if you look at the overall amount of money that it brings us in tax base and to our private businesses, it's, it's an unmatched entity that most communities don't get the privilege of having like we do. So, um, for me, it, I, I don't, I don't see how we couldn't get a return on this investment. It's not a very big investment considering we're being matched, uh, by more dollars than we're actually putting in. And so, um, I guess for me, the responsibility of making sure we're spending the money probably seems, seems right, right in line. I mean, wouldn't you say, Carter?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Nell, I, from what you've just articulated, I'd, I'd have very little room to disagree. I, I would, I, I, I think you're right. Uh, the good news is that, um, as it relates to the tranche of funding that we're talking about and the use that's being proposed by Ms. Kaufman are, are very much in line with what we've seen other uses for these kinds of funds, both by us as well as a, a number of communities throughout the country. So, um, I, I think we are in line with, with what the Event Center does for our community, as well as, uh, the character of these dollars that we're proposing to be used for whatever investment you'd like to make.
And just one follow-up. These funds will be facilitated by Visit Casper?
That's our proposal.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. You have some?
Uh, no. No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Engbrich.
Just a question. Is there potentially a list of maybe future projects down the road that is looking also for CARES money that we? That we might need to use that for?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, we, the, the budget document that you'll review and hopefully approve will have a very, very limited list of, of uses for those, proposed uses for those dollars. And so a, as far as that list is concerned, it, it won't be generated internally aside from, you know, a project like this. So as, as near as I can tell, the answer is no. Those dollars, I'm trying to leave alone and propose that they be left alone so that, again, we can kinda get some history under our belts that would tell us what communities are getting into trouble for as they use those dollars. You know what I mean?
Well, and I'm just leery about using the CARE dollars, I guess, just for that reason. It's just that, I mean, we're only beginning in May here pretty soon, and we still have a whole rest of the year to get through, so.
Exactly, yeah.
It's not an infinite number, so.
Anybody else? She's looking for direction.
Yes, sir.
Thumbs up or thumbs down? So thumbs up or thumbs down on moving forward with?
Does that mean we're saying yes to the fifty grand or yes we're considering?
Yes to the fifty grand or no to the fifty grand?
Does this say which pot it comes from?
I would propose the CARES, yeah.
CARES fund. All right, so thumbs up, fifty thousand dollars out of CARES fund, move towards this project, or thumbs down if you don't. Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke.
Yes, thank you for your time, Council.
Okay, we'll move on to Health Department budget request. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, this price tag is a little different. Is it different? The city of Casper participates with the county in funding the Health Department. And it, thank you. And, and it's been to the extent of about five hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. And that is with regard to funding operations and programs and so on that Anna will go into quite a bit more detail about. The request that you have in front of you is for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the reason that, that that delta sounds a little different, if you've read that letter, is because this, in this current fiscal year, the Health Department actually voluntarily took a, took a hit, if you will, with regard to revenue that we projected to be lower, and, and they tried to match that difference, which, which I appreciate. I, I know that that wasn't easy for the Health Department to do, particularly in light of what we actually went through this past fiscal year. It was a very, very challenging year for us and incredibly more challenging for the Health Department. So the, the, the presentation that you have in front of you tonight and that Anna will walk you through is with regard to a consideration of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars just from the city of Casper to combine with the county's contributions in order to fund the department. And if that is okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer to Ms. Kinder to take the mic.
Thank you, everyone, for letting us come to you. I have our board chair, Mike Meadows, here with me tonight as well. So if there are any questions at the end, we can go through those. But thank you, Mayor, for all members of city council and city manager for allowing me to come and speak to you all. Needless to say, this wasn't the last year that we all dreamed about or thought about, or we will soon forget. The partnerships have definitely been the positive. The challenges, as I look at Brad, have been great, and I know we've worked side by side with most entities in this room at this time. We continue to run our COVID response as well as our normal functions, our regular operations. And I know that there's a couple new members to the city council, so just to kinda give you a very quick spin through the Health Department, I invite any of you to come and spend time with us on any given day. It's an opportunity for us to show you all the things that we do. I've given you an infographic that just kinda captures what we did in this last year. The numbers are significantly less than what we would typically do, obviously because our building was closed down, people were locked down, those kinds of things. But I wanna impress upon you on all of the different areas. We are an independent agency from the state. Other public health agencies throughout Wyoming are directly related to the state, but we are one of the few that is independent, much like Cheyenne Laramie County, Sweetwater County, and a couple of others in our, in our state. But we are independent, which means we have a board of health that helps give us guidance in what we need to do. And we are funded by both city and county. And yes, as City Manager pointed out, we did willingly take a cut last year knowing the impact that was happening to our community. Staffing is an area that is adjusted the most. We usually have a staff of forty individuals that work at the Health Department. Today, at this time, we have almost a hundred that we're actually working with. Most of those are in the COVID response. However, we still maintain the forty. We protect, provide maternal-child health services for mom from their expecting period through age two. And we al-, we also are mandated to provide services to all babies born in Nitrona County. Adult health services are LTO 101s, which is an assessment needed for current and prospective nursing facility residents who are applying for Medicaid coverage. Public health is the only agency that is able to do that. We also have the Community Choices waiver that we provide as well. Our Disease Prevention Clinic does immigration, humanization, STDs, family planning, and TB. Unfortunately, during COVID, did not mean our STD rate went down. It, in fact, continues to grow. Trainings in the community include cancer prevention, STD information, HIV, CPR, baby classes, and chronic disease. Environmental health goes out and inspects our septic, our food, restaurants, pools, tattoo parlors, all those things to ensure that our community stays safe. We also have the Community Prevention Grant that is funded from the state Health Department and is given to the county commissioners that they have given to the Health Department to address those underage drinking, suicide, adult binge drinking, substance use, tobacco use, and those evidence-based community strategies that we use to get the information out and partnerships through the community. Emergency preparedness is geared to preparing our community for all kinds of emergencies, from pandemics to anthrax and national, or natural disasters. We have drilled probably the last, I don't know, as long as I've been at the Health Department, almost over thirteen years now, has always been talking about anthrax, what we would do in that event, and then we had a real pandemic join us. We've learned a lot. We haven't always had all the right answers, but we continue to get better all the time. We received special funding from the CDC directly. Only Cheyenne and Casper receive this funding for the Community Readiness Initiative, which will be going under a huge review this coming year in preparation to make sure that we're prepared for anything and everything. And then we added COVID on top of all of that, and on the back of that has a lot of numbers on there. Twenty twenty definitely impacted the number of individuals that we reached in a given year. As I said before, the building was closed. We continued to operate. We never shut down for a single day. We continued to run business as normal. People answered the phone, did a lot of telehealth, home visits via phone, et cetera. When you look, we received funding from the Wyoming Department of Health from CDC and the CARES Act funding. Unfortunately, I think COVID is here for the long term. What it looks like, we don't know at this time. For example, our vaccine funds will carry us through December. Our testing and contact tracing ends in June. We continue to have cases every week. We've had approximately thirty-five in this last week's time. So contact tracing has not yet been closed for a day. So we're trying to figure out where to put that in our normal function, like, will that be across all departments? Will it be a specific department exclusively towards COVID? Contact tracing, testing, testing has gone back up as well. We have a tent in the alley that we utilize, so will that always exist? We don't know. We're still continuing to plan for that. COVID has placed tremendous hardships on us all. It's allowed us to gain partnerships that we never dreamed possible. A couple examples of how the city has truly supported us is we were providing vaccines during the worst times of the winter with the snow, et cetera. And we had snowdrifts in front of our building that many people were getting stuck. All I did was call the city manager and say, hey, can we get some help? Because our most vulnerable population, the seventy-plus-year-old population, was driving in those conditions, as well as the wind blowing extremely hard. They also, we borrowed a reader board that we finally are giving back today because I know construction season is well upon us. Just to give information quickly, our Health Department building was never intended to give vaccines. We could give up to three hundred and thirty every single day with our highest being five hundred and seven. So never was meant to be that way. Now it's all moved up to our other location, the Casper COVID Center up at the mall. The doors not opening, closing every two seconds has made it like a ghost town. It is completely different than what we've been doing. So I'm here, as you said, to ask for additional funding to help us support the growth and development for meeting our public's health. We're continuing to do a lot of monitoring of all of the statistics that happen in our community. We're seeing an increase in lead in some of our adult population, working with our pediatrics to look at lead in children. Still is the situation. We continue to provide all the vaccinations that we need to for the community. But the growth and the development, the change of where we were even a year ago is drastically different than where we are today. So yes, I did ask for an increase. People asked me what I thought, and I gave them that information for you to all take it as you would. So the letter that's in your packet kind of illustrates the different programs that the funding will be utilized for. We'll also be going to the county for funds as well. There's a lot of information, a lot of numbers on here, but I would just point out that as one side talks about our regular function, the other side is about our COVID response. The same forty people have been there every day. We haven't lost a single person because of the, the amount of work that has been placed upon them. So I'm pretty proud of all of that. And yes, I've been in place. This is my third time coming to talk to you. So it's not like I've been in this game for a while, but we're learning as we go. So I would entertain for any questions that you may have or any specific information you might need.
Councilwoman Ingraham.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Anna, for being here. In your letter, you said you're experiencing significant cuts in the maternal-child health program that would require additional funding, and then you're also increasing your work in the area of cancer prevention. Could you please, so for instance, the cuts in the maternal-child health program, should those cuts not be, you know, replaced? What does that look like in, you know, what does that decrease in services or whatever it is? What does that look like? What's the real term of that?
So what we're looking at is, thank you for the question, it is, it is very difficult to be talking about a program that is mandated, right? And then to be sustaining such significant cuts from the state. It's cuts that they're experiencing overall for all counties. So when we look at that, we're asking to do more for even less than what we typically do. We will be making cuts across the department, and we have about up to Plan C of different things that we can restrategize, look at who we could share responsibilities with. Obviously, it's mandated. We're going to have to do it, which means there will be a cut somewhere else in order to fulfill that. And you can see that adult health at this time is zero-funded, which we will need to figure out as well. If we are able to sustain additional funding from you all, then it just ensures that we can continue to provide the programs that we do. Does that answer your question?
Councilmember Pollock.
Is it a, a fair summary, reading through the letter and listening to your presentation, that the reason for the need and increased funding is sort of twofold? One, other funding sources are being cut, and two, increased demand on the services that are needed in the community in terms of health?
Yes, absolutely. Fantastic question and a great point. We are sustaining cuts, obviously, much like the city, the county, the state is experiencing huge loss with, you know, revenue through oil and gas, all of those kinds of things in the federal government. So when we, we know those cuts are coming, but yet the demand and the need of what we've been doing. You know, public health has always kind of operated more, we just kinda did our thing. We just functioned, we provided programs that we needed to do. Now we're much more in the, the light than we've ever been before. So more programs are coming to the surface of areas of need that we may not have known before because we didn't have the partnerships that we do now. So learning more about what our community needs is what we're starting to identify. So like, the funding is going down, but the need is going up, yes.
And is it fair to say, though, that part of the increase of your need or, or the need of the community itself is COVID-driven? There's a, because obviously, we're dealing with COVID, and we're gonna continue to deal with that. And, and the second part of that question then is, do you have any opportunities of federal funding that would fulfill some of these needs you're asking for due to the increase in COVID?
Yes, so COVID is actually a little bit more comfortable area for us to be in because we do have the funding for vaccine to take us through December. There is talk at the state level that we'll be able to continue the testing and all of those kinds of things. Where we're hurt more long-term is in our maternal-child health and our adult health programming. The state funding is cut, and we know that there are a lot of babies born to, in Nitrona County. And the services, we have to reach out to every single one of those ninety percent of Medicaid babies and seventy percent of the other babies born in Nitrona County. So the funding dropped, but yet the mandate is still in place. So it's kind of a half and half. If the COVID funds go away, how do we put those into our department and make them go the way they need to? But also knowing that our STDs, family planning, you know, elderly babies, all of that is also increasing. Like, the city is, is growing.
Councilmember Pollock.
So if we kind of remove COVID from the equation for a moment, you've got some programs that you operate that are mandated.
Mm-hmm.
Is that at the state level or federal level, both?
Most of them are state level, and we have contracts that say that we have to provide X services that are mandated.
So in order to sort of compensate from what sounds like state's mandating a program, but they've reduced your funding to be able to execute that program, those funds would have to come from non-mandated programs, I assume. Can you give an example of what, what are some non-mandated programs that we would be looking at having to reduce services in in order to backfill state-mandated programs?
So likely, we would sustain significant cuts in our adult health programming. LT 101s would stay in place, but the community-based waiver services would go away. Our Disease Prevention Clinic would be reduced down significantly, that we would only be able to provide so many appointments every given day. We do have a waitlist typically, and our normal time is three weeks at a time. So the more you shrink down those kinds of services, the bigger the need that we'll have overall in the community for more long-term effects. You know, our grant programs themselves, like Wyoming Cancer Resource Services, Wyoming Cancer Coalition, Wyoming AIDS Education, some of those grants will be okay. They're not sustaining a significant cut. The community prevention program is not sustaining a cut. So they'll be okay. But it's those other programs that don't have grant funding support that you all pay for, your adult health, maternal-child health, some of those ones that I listed, the disease prevention would be hit the hardest.
Can you go into a little more detail about what, what is adult health? What, what's involved in that program?
So adult health is the LT 101s that we evaluate a person's ability to function and provide care for themselves. And as they qualify for Medicaid services, if you've gone into or have a family member that has gone into long-term care, obviously, it's not something that we all can afford very easily. So you typically do apply for the Medicaid system. So they have to be evaluated, which is required to be a public health member. How they function, how they do so that they can be evaluated, what kind of level of care that they will need in the nursing home. So that would be one part of it. The community-based waiver, which is the case management, ensuring that a person is able to stay home, function well, take care of themselves, has access to all of the things that they need to have, that typically will be the program that we may have to cut, and it will be pretty substantial to our department. A department that operates with three nurses and an admin will probably be reduced to one person. There will be hard cuts. Typically, personnel is where we will go, reducing down at the Health Department.
Councilwoman Nell.
Thank you. It looks like personnel-wise, that's probably the biggest part of your budget. And I see that between the county and the city, you're receiving personnel-wise, that's probably the biggest part of your budget. And I see that between the county and the city, you're receiving or asking for one point three, two million dollars. I'm curious what your overall budget is. And in other words, your federal, your state, where does that put you?
With our COVID funds, we're over six point two million dollars with all of it. Um, if the COVID funds go away, we're down to four point two.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Anna, I may have misheard and, and forgive me if I did, but did, did you say that during the pandemic season, you grew, um, the, your organization grew from forty employees to a hundred employees?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Currently we are at a hundred employees. Um, if you look at the infographic, um, on the back of it, we've had sixty-three COVID responders, forty COVID vaccinators, um, and then the forty people that we have that are typically employed at the health department. Um, not all responders are still with us and we're continuing to reduce down. Those are just temporary employees that we do have. Um, but we will have to maintain some of those just due to the fact of contact tracing, testing. Um, all of those kinds of functions will continue to exist.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could. So if, if indeed, um, you know, you do have to maintain those services, but I've got, it's a two-part question for me. Who, who would be telling you you've got to maintain those services? And if the dollars go away, those services don't? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Pretty much, yes. Um, we, so the state will, is providing the funding right now. Um, we don't know what the, the landscape looks like for that moving forward, like what happens after June thirtieth for testing. We don't know what that looks like and we don't know what vaccines look like after December thirtieth. So knowing those two things, we know that now we're going to have to do COVID from here forward. There's no, it's just going to be part of, um, some of the epidemiology that we do for all of the disease processes that we track and follow. So, you know, we track chlamydia, gonorrhea, TB, hepatitis, HIV, it's just, it'll just continue to add to another thing that we have to do.
So as you're retracting, right?
Yep.
Um, what, what do you think your new critical mass is gonna be? It's been forty for a long time.
Depends on how much I have to come. Um, we've unfortunately, so we did meet with all managers, um, on site to see what we could make easy, simple cuts for. Um, we did take our proposed budget to the board, um, last week and we've approved it at that point. Um, at this point, we wait for city and county to provide us information on what we will be granted. Um, and then we'll make the necessary adjustments from there.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
So I know this, this is a, it's a big ask and I, and I know it's a, it's a tough decision to make. I know it gives our city manager heartburn. Um, and rightly so. I, I get it where we're at and I appreciate that. But I also think that, you know, we, we look at this and I know that health departments around the country, including our state and our local health departments have certainly gotten knocked in the chops quite a bit, um, for various reasons. But, um, I, I think part of it is then, and I'll share just a anecdotal story, why I appreciate Anna and I appreciate the health department. Um, she reached out to me a couple of weeks ago. We had a mutual friend that passed away from COVID, um, who was in the Latino community. And she had, uh, called me and said, I'm worried about Latinos aren't getting vaccinations. So I said, well, let's figure out what we can do. And so we, we talked about it and then we decided to, um, since we, um, had lost a mutual friend, um, we had to do something. So we reached out to a few people, spoke to a few Latinos and, and in the community that had some connections. Um, and to me, um, it spoke to how, um, of much work the health department has been putting and working into that and, and doing the things that need to be done. Um, being spread thin and being frustrated and struggling with those things. To me, um, whether we can figure out a way to fund all of it, which I would love to, um, or not, I think we have to recognize the work that they have done and the critical nature that they have been here. And so my support for what they've done is, is, um, a hundred percent. And I know that it's been difficult. Um, and so I know you guys have also been beat up in the press and beat up a little bit in the social media and things like that. And, um, but when you guys stepped up for one, because of one individual that uh, we knew and died and we said we have to figure something out. That's what it means to be a community. And so you guys have done more than enough. So thank you for doing that. And so, um, I understand where you're at Carter and where we're at in doing this and certainly we'll make the right decision. But I also understand why you're coming forward, asking for this big ask. So thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pollock.
But two-part, maybe a question and a statement. We'll see if the second one turns into a question or not. First question is, um, what percentage of people within the Casper city limits do you serve as a health department?
This is such an incredibly difficult question. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Kaufman asked me this a lot. Um, it is, it is very difficult to, to put a number on that, um, especially in this last year. We've not spent a lot of time looking back at our demographics and those kinds of things. We simply have not had time.
Yeah, I can imagine that.
Um, but I can tell you, uh, cause I also know that we serve, um, Barnum, uh, Barnum, Evansville and Mills as well. Um, that is a, a future project of definitely going and talking with them of the services that we provide there. We do support Midwest. We've been giving them, um, vaccines. So we're covering that area as well. Um, I can't give you that specific of a number at this time. I know it's in the works, but we've also let a few things go. Um, just trying to meet the demand of what's been happening in the last year.
And then I guess it's, the next is more of a statement. Um, I think an important thing to think about as we roll this around is that, is that this, there are consequences that will cost us more money later potentially and have negative impacts on our community if we don't do what needs to be done to make sure that these services stay in place now. So while I think it's, when we think about the budget, it, it can be difficult, like looking at these types of numbers, but we also need to consider if we don't do it, what does it cost us down the road? And what are the impacts, negative impacts to our community down the road? Because it's also not really fair of us today to, to, to pull back at the expense of people in the future, uh, in our community. So I think we need to, need to look at a long-term, we need to look at the long-term outcomes for our community. And, um, you know, I, I trust the folks that we have at the health department to present us with a budget that accurately reflects the health needs of our community. So I think we should consider that, um, heavily and, and remember that, that, uh, investing in these types of programs now, uh, a- all it does is produce better health outcomes for our community in the future. And, um, you know, probably, probably save a lot of these programs are preventative in nature and are, are working on, you know, cre- creating healthy people in our community so that we don't draw, um, draw down funds in other aspects of, of the types of services we fund in other ways. So, uh, I think we should keep that in mind when we think about this as well.
Councilwoman Nell.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, is this, your organization is one with Dr. Dahl, correct?
Dr. Dahl is our county health officer.
Okay, so, um, you know, I'm gonna take a different path. I, and I'm sorry for those of you that have lost folks. I understand, I get it. But I, for me personally, and I'm only one, I would have to have public input before I could make a decision of this gravity. This is a lot of money and, um, there's a lot of unknowns. There's a lot of unknown funding that's going to still be available for COVID through the federal government and through the state. And, uh, I know we just got a huge influx of money, um, to combat COVID. The governor did. I don't know if they've decided what they're gonna do with it yet. But between that and the, um, and the federal money that's still gonna be available, this is a huge chunk of money. And I would, I would personally want some public input, input myself before I could cast any vote on this. So, I mean, this directly affects our constituents. It directly affects our people. And, um, and I think they should have a say in something this vast and this big. Just my opinion.
So just to clarify to your comment, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Um, none of the city funds would be utilized for COVID.
Councilwoman Ingraham.
I, City Manager, I just had a question for you. Um, in the past, how much has the city contributed towards these programs?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, our, our, um, contribution has historically been five hundred and forty thousand a year. Um, last year was different. We, we, we paid, I think, in the neighborhood of five hundred and thirteen. Um, and again, that was because the, the, the health department's willing to take a hit from a projected revenue standpoint. But typically it's five forty.
Councilwoman Gammara.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, to reiterate a couple of things that, uh, previous council members stated, uh, total agreement with, uh, Councilman Pacheco as far as the important work you guys have done the past year. I mean, um, you know, can't imagine what it was, uh, like at the health department. Can't imagine all the hours you guys put in. Um, we owe the health department a lot of thanks for all the work they did over the course of the past year in the, the Casper V COVID campaign. I was really impressed with that. I thought that was, uh, probably the best one in the state as far as getting information out to people in a timely manner. So, um, completely agree with the value of the department you does. And then also to repeat what Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Pollock said, the importance of prevention and long-term thinking and, you know, trying not to make cuts now, uh, that'll cost us more later. That all being said, um, it is a bit frustrating that it, you know, um, the state is mandating that you carry out these services, but reducing the funding, uh, to do so. And, um, it's kind of on our shoulders, I guess, to make it whole. Um, so that's frustrating, I guess. But, um, I wonder, I, I, so he- here's where I'm at. I, just since I got you here, this is kind of unrelated to what we're talking about, but, um, something that I wish, uh, we as a council had more information on was, uh, uh, we, we get the board meeting, uh, minutes, uh, and I've noticed the public health ones, there's not any information in there, um, which has been frustrating for me as somebody that likes information because this past year, that's who I've wanted, that's who I've wanted to hear from the most is the health department. And so I read these board meeting minutes, uh, for the agencies and I'm not liaisons on Central Wyoming. Uh, the regional water is a good one. They have very, very detailed minutes. And even though I don't go to those meetings, I feel like I attended. Um, they're just so detailed. They're really helpful. I like, I like reading those. And so I don't know how anyone else on council feels, but I really enjoy getting those meeting minutes to know what's going on elsewhere where I'm not serving as liaison and, uh, especially the health department. I would have liked more details and information the past year because I feel like I'd be able to make a more informed decision now. Um, aside from that, uh, I just wonder, maybe this is a question for Carter, but, um, are we in a position where we can't afford? Uh, I'm, I'm totally okay with, um, sustaining the services that we've had historically, like Councilman Pollock said, not to, um, just compound problems further down the road. But are we even in a position to be considering going above and beyond what we've historically contributed? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, um, the, without a doubt, a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar lift is a, is a big lift for the city's general fund because that's exactly where this comes out of. And it has for, as long as we've had the relationship. It's just right off the top of the general fund. So candidly, six fifty is, is a tough one.
Councilwoman Kathy.
Couple of things I was interested in is, this is the ask. And in places that I have been able to make budgets, try to make projections, um, I'm used to seeing past history, where the money came from, where the money goes out to, which funds are used where. And we see none of that in this proposal. And I guess I would have to go along with, uh, city manager's angst, so to speak, along with, uh, Councilwoman Nell, is that I really have no basis to make a decision on. And, uh, along with that, are we getting funds? Are we, are you getting funds from Evansville and from Mills and from Barnum? Or are they getting the carry based on the county and Casper? Because they are also getting services from you. And so that's something else I would be interested in. I would be interested in where the grant money is coming from. Because you just said too, that none of this city money is going to be used for COVID. Well, if none of that money, if none of this money is being used for COVID, just between the city and the county, you're asking for two hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase to maintain programs. And I'm interested then, is the state cutting that much money out of your budget or not? I mean, to me, there's a lot of empty holes, so to speak, in looking at the overall budget. So I think from my standpoint, I would like to see that past history for the past couple of years and see where your projections are going this year.
Absolutely. Um, kinda to answer you, but to go back to Councilman, um, Gammara. So there's been a transition in who our liaison has been. So that would be one reason why we don't have the information that we would typically want to have. Um, it was always my intent when I was hired on to start becoming more active, um, with the city and the county, um, meetings, et cetera. Um, I felt like we've always been kind of a little bit detached and kind of over, over in this world. Um, wanting to have a more active role. I've watched, I've learned a lot of different things. Fortunately, Marsh and I changed everything with that. Um, but I have no problem providing some of the historical information for you. Um, and I think there's some of you on the council that know us and know that we're extremely adaptable and we make whatever it is life hands us work. So I was asked to provide a number. Right? And I don't, I'll probably get in trouble for saying this, but it's this number, right? There's a lot of space between those two things and we have lots of plans to figure out how to make things work. So when you asked, I gave you the top notch. Right? Isn't that what you're supposed to go do in negotiations? So when we look at that, there's lots of places where we can make cuts. Unfortunately, it's gonna make cuts to programs and personnel. And so to sustain where we're at. So the city funds would be for administration, our environmental health. Our environmental health is solely, solely paid for by city and county funds. It does not receive funding from anywhere else other than the minimum fees that they do receive. The state did increase the fees that they could charge. However, it stays at the state level. It doesn't come to us. Um, the health department building, pretty minimal for the, um, building that we have. Board of Health that we have expenses. None of the funds will be used in disease prevention, um, except in our immunization program. But general child health will also receive funds and then adult health would be restructured to the point that I'm not sure what it will look like. We will have to do the LT one oh ones, but likely that will have to come within other departments. And, um, so if that makes any sense at all in the world, but, um, there was a number that was given based on what it would take to do all the things that we need to do. But we're welcoming, we know that we will have to make cuts somewhere. But COVID funds, who knows how long they will live, but once those funds go away, it becomes just a responsibility for the health department to do. Much like lead, there is absolutely no funding behind lead. And we know that there is one, um, business in town that has extremely high lead levels, which we need to address and do something with. So kinda, it'll balance out. And yes, I do agree, I do need to go to Mills, Barnum, Evansville, et cetera. Um, unfortunately just have not been able to do that this year.
One thing I want to point out is that when the funding goes away from the federal government for COVID, COVID itself and testing is not gonna go away. That's something that's here to stay. And that's gonna be a cost that's gonna be added on to it. So the suggestion that I would make, it is a big number that we have to take in today, but at the same time, um, to do nothing is not gonna help you out. It's gonna be a detriment to the health department and it's gonna cause problems, as you said, later down the road. I don't know if we're able to do it, but I would suggest that maybe we look at a six hundred thousand dollar figure as opposed to a six fifty. It's kind of meeting in the middle. that's kind of meeting in the middle, and, uh, see, uh, if that would assist in. Obviously, it's gonna assist. It's giving them something. It's a compromise to meet in the middle. I don't know what, i- is that doable, I guess is the question. Mr. City Manager.
Um, well, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna ask that question in, in a little bit more of a complex fashion, if I may. Uh, um, I think the thing that the council should really consider, and in a large, to a larger degree, the commission as well, is, is with regard to the tolerance that you should have with respect to the state passing unfunded mandates onto local governments, particularly when they also want to not allow local governments to have flexibility with respect to the resources they generate or the destiny that they control in their own planning and everything else. Those two principles do not reconcile with each other. And so in, in, in my estimation, the council is in the position of saying yes or no to that idea. Because if in fact the state has said, well, we're not gonna provide funds for these programs anymore, but we still expect you to do it, I don't know if the council should say, hey, we'll do it. I don't know if the commission should say, yeah, we'll do that. We understand. And so while there is the, the, the argument that says, it, you know, without those programs, we, we run a, a public health cost that could ostensibly create problems for us locally, we also recognize that we're all State of Wyoming residents. We're all county residents at the end of the day as well. And, um, we should be all in this together, not one doing it without the other. And so while I, you know, six hundred is certainly better than six fifty and those kinds of things, I'd really like to know what it is from a, from a, from a quantification standpoint that, um, you were being forced to, uh, sort of shoulder without the help of the state, where previously you may have had help, and, uh, and, and what it is that the county and the city would be asked to take over from a funding standpoint. Because I assure all of you in this room, we take those steps and shoulder those costs where the state used to. We will have those costs forever.
You own it, yeah.
And we'll, we'll never get the state to say, ah, yeah, you're right, we shouldn't have done that. We'll take 'em back. I don't think that's gonna happen. My problem is, I, I don't know what that, you know, I don't know what that quantifies out to. I, I don't know what that translates to, and, uh, six hundred may be okay in that regard, but I don't really know what all that means from an numerical standpoint.
Your, your questions and comments are exactly what I was looking for when I was talking about the past history and where have the funds come from, which programs they have gone to, and then which ones. Because I noticed in here, for example, um, and I don't know whether it's always been that way or not, oh, where did I wind up now? Anyhow, um, it was one of the programs that you were using ninety thousand dollars of the county money and none of the city money for. Thank you. The disease prevention. Well, now, if you were to go ahead and expand that on out to all of your programs and list then all of the state money that's coming in and where it's going to these various programs, and then how you are planning on using this money, that answers the question that you're talking about as well as the questions that I was asking, so that we can see where the cuts are coming from and where this money would be going. The other thing that did bother me though is, and I'm gonna use an anecdotal situation as well, is when I was area manager for a major oil company, I used to have to present a multimillion dollar budget every year. My other managers used to go ahead and inflate those numbers, so then they could come back in behind, say, oh, yeah, we'll take a ten percent cut to get where they are. That kinda sounded like what your six hundred and fifty thousand number was, and we're not looking for that either. This isn't a use it or lose it. This is, we need a realistic, bottom-line type budget right now, because we're in the same situation as you are, trying to maintain a good example. We should be spending seven million dollars a year on streets. We have the money to spend three point seven this year. So everything comes down to that, and I think we need a better justification for it. And actually, to split the difference is five hundred and eighty-one thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And on, on, to compound that, one of the reasons I was asking for maybe some public input is becau- it's obvious if the state is gonna require you to do unfunded mandates, something's going to give. And, and I don't think the city has the money to take over for the state, so guess who suffers? Our constituents do, and that's why my comment, I'm not anti-health, I'm not anti-public health. I'm more fiscally responsible with the money. Can we afford it? Where's it gonna come from? Are we gonna be stuck with this bill every year now if we're taking over funding for the state? That's why, in my opinion, this needs, we need to somehow get out to our voters and find out where we go with this, because they're ultimately the ones that are affected by this. We're making a decision for a huge populace of people. But we're also gonna strap them with a bill that they can't pay if this continues in the future. So somehow, we've gotta be responsible here. Carter, you hit on it, and I was tr- I was trying to get to there, and you articulated it better than I did, and I appreciate you doing that. But, you know, this is one of those situations where we're, we're on a teeter totter, and, you know, public health, money, you know, it's, it's a horrible situation to be in. It is. But, you know, aside from lobbying the state and getting them back involved in the funding aspect of this, um, or doing away with their mandates, which is also gonna cut services. I don't know what the answer is, but somehow, you know, decisions gotta be made, and I don't know how we make that decision without public input. I ju- I don't, I don't know how we do that. We can't just pull the money out of a hat. It's not like we're, our coffers are full like it used to be, so.
And we're not the feds to keep printing it.
Councilwoman Ingraham.
So I just have a question. So for these services, if somebody were to come into your facility, are these services free, or does the public pay anything for any of this?
So we do bill insurance, we accept Medicaid, and we have a sliding fee, and if they have no ability to pay, then it is free.
So for like, somebody needing to come in and get, um, a COVID test, are they paying for a COVID test?
No, we do not charge for a COVID test.
Is that coming from COVID money covering that side of things?
And we just received after, um, ordering the Sufit machine, which is the gold standard for rapid tests. Um, there are a lot of rapid tests in the community that are not, um, sound, so we finally have received that, um, test. We do not know how, like, our job is to provide those individual services that cannot otherwise afford it or get it elsewhere. So knowing how expensive this test is, how do we prioritize for getting to the right people? Right now, we can charge the grant funds for that, but after June thirtieth, we're not able to do that. And there are other entities in town that do charge significant amounts of funds for those tests. Um, there's a lot of information up there with people getting tests so that they can travel, they can get surgery, they can do X, Y, or Z. Um, we are focused only providing for symptomatic individuals. All of that is like very, um, specific, but when a person walks in and needs a immunization, um, you know, the state did remove all of the adult-sponsored vaccine. Um, some of the children, but immunizations are no longer provided, um, through funds. So does that mean that child will not have those required vaccines to start school? No, we will make sure that is. So we do write off a lot of that.
So, so how much do you charge for a rapid COVID test?
We charge nothing at this time for rapid COVID tests. We have not implemented the use of the Sufit machine at this time. But today, um, and we do not charge for vaccine either. Um, we do ask for, um, their insurance card for an administrative fee. However, if they're not able to pay that, it does, it's just a tou- a shot that we give.
I guess kind of what, because I just had to get a rapid COVID test for surgery, and I paid a hundred and forty dollars for it. And, um, it was just right out of my pocket, paid, didn't bill the insurance or anything. And so I kinda feel like if you guys were somewhat in line with already that, some of this money you wouldn't need to be asking for, because the public weren't needing it. I have to have surgery, so, you know, it's not an option for me. Not everybody can afford that, but for those who can, should pay for it instead of, so you have the population that they have money, but they're gonna go where it's free.
The testing that we have is available from the state, so we do not charge for it. Um, the Sufit machine is a whole different ball of wax. Um, that's where we're getting into being competitive with other agencies in the community. Our goal, our mission is really to provide services to anyone and everyone with or without the ability to pay for it. So a COVID test through us is free completely at this time.
Councilman Gamroth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and thank you, Carter, for illustrating, um, the frustration that I was trying to vocalize earlier. Um, I completely agree with your assessment as far as, um, the states, um, you know, mandating, uh, that we, that the Health Department carries out these s- uh, services but not funding those. Um, from just a philosophical, ideological point of view, um, I totally agree that if, if we take that on, if we shoulder the consequences of their, uh, actions, they're not gonna come back to us next year or two and say, thanks for doing us a solid, uh, we'll refund you and continue on with our responsibilities. Um, I mean, it kinda reminded me, I used to teach parenting classes at Central Wyoming Counseling Center using Love and Logic Evidence-Based Parenting Program, and it was reminding me of the boundaries that we used to teach parenting, uh, parents up there as far as, um, you know, these are sort of natural consequences. It, uh, what, what Councilman Nell, i- i- it sucks. We're balancing public health with money that we do not have. And so I, I don't ever wanna be in a position where I'm advocating for a less healthy community, but, uh, you know, I, I'm sorry, where I'm at right now is, I feel like if we maintained the funding we, uh, had historically, five hundred and forty thousand, we are stating our commitment to uphold the public health from the city's perspective. We are going to do everything we can. We're not cutting, right? I mean, that's, my understanding is, five forty would not be a cut. It would be sustaining our historical, um, uh, you know, um, granting. So, um, I feel like that puts the city in a position to say, we are not making cuts to public health, and so any reduction you see in services at the community level, in our community, in our city, in our county, that is on the state legislature. Um, um, you know, that's the position, that, that's the position I feel like we're in. I don't feel like we're in a position where we can go above and beyond what we've done historically, but I feel like if we did, if we match what we, um, have given historically, that puts all of those consequences on the state legislature where I believe it deserves to be.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pollak.
Um, so, Carter, wh- what you said, you know, I, I like spend most of my free time beating the state revenue drop. That is, like, dealing, addressing that issue is, in my mind, like, the most important thing facing all of us right now. And I, um, I, I do, that is what I, I, I like wake up in the morning, like, thinking about that. I go to bed thinking about that. And it's, um, so, so I, I agree, and I agree, and I, I agree. I mean, this is a really unfair position for the state to put, put municipalities in, and I think this is the tip of the iceberg of this type of situation, uh, that municipalities are going to have to deal with. I think we have a responsibility to advocate like heck for, for revenue change at the state level so that we don't have to deal with unfunded mandates and that sort of, uh, thing, and minimize the impact of those decisions and what I see as a failure of responsibility on our citizens. And I don't know how we balance those two things, but I'm not sure taking a line that says, like, we wanna teach the state a lesson at the expense of our citizens is really appropriate either. So I'm, I'm not really sure that, that, uh, how we, how we accomplish that. Um, but I, I do think it's an, it's an unfair position. I think that, um, there is responsibility, um, to solve some of these problems. The, the city doesn't have the mechanism to solve some of these problems. Um, we, we don't have the ability to. Uh, we are, we are in a large degree, I just saw an article describe municipalities in the state of Wyoming as essentially wards of the state, because so much of our funding comes from the state level. Um, but I do wanna be careful as we have these conversations, um, because like, I, you know, it's, it's easy to say, it's just a, a number, we need to teach the state a lesson, but there's a real human impact to those types of decisions as well, and I think it's, it's our responsibility to figure out, you know, we can't control what they're doing at the state level. We can certainly, we can advocate for change and we can push for it, uh, but in the meantime, we've got a responsibility to our citizens to try to soften the blow, try to minimize the impact, and do the best we can to maintain the level of service despite the fact that the state's not doing what we need them to do.
Maintain the level of service? Is that the language you wanna?
Not maintain the budget necessarily, maintain the level of service.
Sure.
Which may cost us more money, which we may not have.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Thank you. I think everybody in this room, anybody sitting here can agree, the Health Department is an essential service. If, if I am wrong, tell me that right now. Like the police, like the fire department, what they've done with COVID, barring where everybody else is sitting as far as what you believe or don't believe about COVID, or whatever else, we had to shut down for a year. They took it up upon themselves to have to do this. Granted, they got some federal funding and state funding. They are an essential service. We wouldn't be sitting there grilling Anna like that if it was the chief standing up there as a poli- as a police officer. We have, we're talking about going and having a forty million dollar police, a new police building, and we're not gonna have a public comment about that when we're talking about raising to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars? Now, we may not make it to six hundred and fifty thousand, we may end up at five forty. But what I wanna say is, is that it is an essential service that helps us to make sure exactly what Amber said of what we're trying to do. And I agree with Steve, we need more numbers. I agree with you, a hundred percent. We need to see that history for us to justify it. But they are an essential service. So if we're thinking about building a forty million dollar police department, and we're fighting over a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and we're saying we wanna have a public comment for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and not mention one time about a, a public comment for a forty million dollar building, sorry, it doesn't fly with me. My point being is that looking at whether it's six hundred, six hundred and fifty, or five hundred and forty thousand, they're an essential service.
I'm gonna add to that, and, you know, it's the, the full comment of saying that we need to, we'll ultimately end up burdening whatever the state doesn't give to us. And so what I'm hearing here tonight, and no offense to anybody, but if the state says, hey, it's mandated, but we're not gonna give you the money for it, and we're all sitting here saying, well, we don't wanna pick that up, and we're gonna get stuck with that the rest of our lives, comes back to what you're saying. The citizens are gonna be the one that's gonna be burdened with it. I mean, because the state doesn't do it, is that when we step up and say, well, we're not gonna do the right thing? We're gonna cut the services back, and you just won't have them, period, and you'll be the ones to pay the price for it. That's not right either. So while we're talking about historical things, I guess the question is, historically, we've given the five forty, but have we ever in history given more than five forty? And if so, what was that amount? Cause if we have, then we can't just sit here and say, well, we've always given four, five forty, so we need to stick at that. If we've given it in the past, if there's a reason behind it for us giving extra money, then I'd like to know that too.
That was why I asked for history.
Yeah, well, we're asking for history from Anna, and we're telling her that she needs to provide it to us. I would like to know, have we ever, as a city, given more than five forty? And what was the reason behind it? And if we have, then we need to take that into consideration too, not just sit here and say, well, five forty's all we've given, lines drawn and the same.
And I have no problem with that, but I've gotta have the numbers. I'm not just gonna arbitrarily, and I don't care what you say about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, it's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and I wanna know where it's gonna go and why it's needed other than I just set my mark here, you asked me for a number, which is exactly what she said. And I wanna know where it's gonna go and why it's needed, other than I just set my mark here, you asked me for a number, which is exactly what she said.
Councilwoman.
So once again, we can go back and forth on the number, it is what it is, but like, especially when we're talking about, one of the programs she said that this is gonna fall under is maternal child health. Some of you maybe have either chosen not to have children or are not physically able, cause you're a man, or whatever, to have cha- a child. Having a baby is really hard, like, and that's for somebody with the resources, like, that I had available, like, imagine not having those resources and having a baby. Guys, like, these programs are not something to joke about, like, this is real, like, hard stuff. And so I guess for me, it, once again, I know that we talked about the general fund, but if we can give fifty thousand dollars to the event center to put on some parties, I think that we could on some level find fifty thousand dollars to help people who are having babies or are having lead poisoning or are dealing with like diseases that can be controlled. I don't really think that that's a big ask.
So I would like to um perhaps provide you additional information. Um, is there a specific time that you would like to have
That'd be great.
a historical perspective as well as showing you where all the funds go for all of the different programs that we have?
And if we could, could we ask uh for additional information that's been asked tonight? Um, we'll provide additional information that we have, and then we'll have to come back in our next work session, which will be the second week in May. And then we can have this discussion a little bit further at that point in time to
Absolutely.
come up with some hard numbers of where we really need to be.
Yeah, is, is it? Councilmember Pollak.
Can we be sure too that those numbers include, even if it's just a projection, like, what is the gap that is resulting from the state funding?
Yeah.
That, like, what part of this increase is that gap? I, I think that's, we gotta know that stuff, and, and
Yeah.
to be honest, I wanna know that every time we're having this conversation with whatever agency it is, because I want to know where, where are the shortcomings at the state level, and what are we being asked to pick up at the municipal level that we may or may not be equipped to do?
Councilman.
Thank you. And, and also, if we could get a very real number of what you're actually looking for, not just a, the top number, if we can get that kinda somewhere where it's amenable and we have a better idea to look at it, and um, and how many people we're actually servicing, I think is really important, and that's a number that nobody seems to know. Um, I'd really like to know how many people we're actually servicing, so.
Councilman Gammros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um.
Could be ten people coming a hundred times.
I will definitely provide all of that necessary information for you.
Thank you.
Again, I, I just wanna thank you very much for being here, Amber.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Um, I, I hope the, the hard questions uh I and the rest of the council are asking, uh, you know, aren't personal or anything like that. Um, to reiterate what Councilwoman Pollak said about the tip of the iceberg, that is, I guess that's why I'm leaning towards the stance I'm taking is that um I absolutely believe in the, the importance of maternal childhood health and, you know, thirty thousand condoms for kids. I, you know, can't imagine how much teenage pregnancies that reduces and the burden that has on the social safety net and all the, all of those things. I guess, I, I guess my question is, why are we considering this siloed? Wh- wh- why is this request and why is this consideration not part of our overall budget? Um, because it's hard for me to weigh the impact on maternal health services and uh, uh, you know, uh, sex prevent, uh, sex, disease prevention, stuff like that against uh, Amber mentioned the iceberg. I don't have a full understanding of what the iceberg is yet, and so I am worried that if we get in the habit of saying yes, that we're goi- you know, I, I don't know how the process works, and so I don't want to have a list of things, list of requests, and we say, yes, 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 cause, you know, cutting ch- maternal childhood health is just too hard, and then we get to the bottom of the list, and we have nothing left for, you know, I, I imagine there's a lot of essential important services, and so I still feel like I'm not in a position where I fully comprehend what those all are. Um, and so that's why I'm leaning towards maintain, I know the services of the Health Department are important, that's why I advocate maintaining um, what we've paid historically and not cutting, which is what, well, in theory, we're gonna have to do everywhere else. I don't think we've shown it in practice yet, but um, I feel like we're gonna be saying no and making lots of cuts, and um, this is one of those areas where I feel like it is so important, especially considering the past year. It's so important, maybe we shouldn't make cuts here, but I also don't think we're in a position to go above and beyond again, again.
Councilman Kathy. The one thing I was gonna ask is, when you set out the historical things, put like a single asterisk by the original state mandated and a double asterisk about the new programs, but somehow distinguish the mandated programs and what the new ones are that they're not, that they haven't provided funds for. So that's, that's the other part of, part of what we're looking for.
Yeah, no, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
This is my last comment for this, and, and I'm done. Um, we have spirited conversations in here sometimes, so we're all still friends, by the way.
Well, I'll go out drinking afterwards.
But more, more importantly, keep fighting. Thank you for what you're doing. I know you're tired. I know you're frustrated, but thank you and keep fighting. And, you know, you, you have our support and we're here, and I think uh, Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Pollak said it best. Um, we're talking about human beings and people. And so, to me, having to say goodbye to my godmother and my aunt over FaceTime, seeing her not being able to breathe makes it real. And it will, that's, that's the lasting effect on my life when we talk about COVID. That's, that's the impression on my life and how it's affected me. And not everybody can understand that, but you guys are doing what you're doing, and you're fighting, fighting a war, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
And if you can bring that information back to us, that'd be great. And last thing I'm gonna say is, you and I, a year ago, uh, we butted heads and we did not get off on our right foot. But in the last year, I have come to respect what you do and whatever body else does over there, and I understand your needs. I am the new liaison over there, and so I get it a hundred percent. And that's why I fight for you and I will fight for you, bring us proper numbers, and I'll be the first one to stand there and tell, tell everybody that you need this stuff. We've come a long way, and I, and I know, I know where you're at right now, so please bring us numbers back and uh, we'll see you in two weeks or three weeks, whatever it ends up being here, and go from there.
So I would like to say thank you for the opportunity. This has been a fifteen minute conversation in the past. But we've come and gained this information. We need to change our relationship and our working relationship. I have no problem showing you every single nickel and dime that we have and that we spend and the services that we provide and the number of people that we truly reach. I'm happy anytime that you would like to talk about the impacts that we've had on certain individuals and what we've seen and where we've been. Absolutely, one hundred and ten percent. So actually, I appreciate this conversation very much because I think it changes where we're at and where we have been. The letter was what was done in the past. It's never, like, you know what I mean? There's not a lot of depth in there. I know that. But that's always how, or what I knew what to be done. Happy to change that in the future and provide much more depth to you. So I appreciate all of you and all of your questions. Um, it hasn't been a fantastic year, and yes, I am very tired of fighting the fight. But I see little tiny bits of light that I can do other things besides COVID, so thank you for that, and I do appreciate your time tonight. I know it's a little bit longer than we might have had on our agenda, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to council goals and objectives part to Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the, uh, the last time we visited about council goals, council gave a lot of input and insights with regard to what was important to them, uh, to all of you, I should say, and uh, notwithstanding that, um, we, we've had the opportunity to speak individually as well and uh, and get, gather some of your thoughts and um, try to put together, as a result of all that conversation, a collection of, of what we hope will be reflective of your ideals and what you hold as important uh moving forward. Because without a doubt, um, what it is that you and Scotts with respect to this document, we will embrace as a direction for staff activity, for budget design, and for, you know, potentially hiring decisions and, and so on and so forth, um, our communications with the public and, and et cetera. So hopefully you've had the opportunity to ingest a lot of this anyway, um, recognizing that we, we, we handed you the last sheet, I think, today or last night or whatever, so I, I know that some of it, you haven't had probably the full amount of opportunity to go through. But um, from what we could gather, based on all of that information, was that you had three primary goals. One being basic infrastructure support, um, what we call business investment, and uh finally, community outreach, or citizen engagement, excuse me, citizen engagement. And within each of those larger sort of overarching goals, we tried to put together um smaller objectives and tasks associated with those larger goals. With the hope that by accomplishing those objectives and tasks, we have accomplished your larger goal of, you know, at least of what we thought you were looking for. While this may not be comprehensive with, you know, every thought that was delivered in the, in the framework of these conversations, we, we tried to capture what we could tell were sort of common themes, um, and perspectives that, that you provided. In fact, I, you, you probably don't know this, but Fleur actually went through and, and indexed the, the video from the work session the last time pursuant to each of your comments and where it tied on specific goals and so on, and that's how, that's how thorough we tried to be with this. Um, so forgive us if it doesn't quite capture everything that you're looking for, but nonetheless, I hope it at least gets a sort of a, a midline with regard to where everybody wants to be. Um, so tonight, what we'd like to do is, is have you question us on this, talk us through it, help us understand where you'd like us to be, and if we need to do more homework on it, that's fine, we, we're happy to do that and bring you back something that, that may be closer to what you wanna see happen as a group. Uh, but, but we do view this as kind of our marching orders for the next two years. Um, and uh, if we need to, in the middle, say, of the two-year period, adjust and recalibrate, we're open to that as well. Uh, there's a lot of ways we can go with this. Um, and uh, and tonight uh is your opportunity to take us in whatever direction you'd like. Thank you.
Councilman Gamm.
Well, unsurprisingly, I have plenty to say, so I guess my question is, do we wanna take them one at a time or just kind of? I have things I'd like to say on each of them, so if, if you'd like to take them one at a time, maybe it would be easier.
That is perfectly okay.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
So the first one then. Um, basic infrastructure. Um, that personally is one of those things, uh, you know, when I hear, I think it was Councilman Kathy brought it up earlier, we spent three point six, or Councilman, I don't want to eat you. Spent three point six, we need to spend seven. That's one of those things I routinely hear about and I think, you know, is a perpetual citizen complaint, is the roads are bad, you know, that, I think uh, in my mind, that's absolutely one of our priorities, and so the fact that we're at fifty percent funding where that needs to be, that's why I'm coming from such a critical place in some of these other areas, you know, not wanting to go above and beyond what we have historically, cause we have some areas like this where we are drastically under, you know, I don't even uh, I'll try to contain myself till we get to storm water where we're only spending two percent of what we're expected, so that's, that's where I'm coming from, is we have so many areas where we haven't spent nearly as, as much as we should have historically, and I'd like to try to, I know we're in a downturn and stuff, but um, some of these areas, roads especially, I'd like to try to get closer to that seven million, and so um, you know, I don't know what else to add other than I would really like to get that number up, you know, as much as we can, um, cause I think it's, it's nowhere near where it needs to be. Our roads are bad, the research bears that out. Uh, our citizens wanna see uh infrastructure upgrades, and so I'd like to try to get that closer. And that's it.
Councilmember Pollak.
On, on this item, the, uh, item one A, to me, is absolutely critical, as I took a, as we've had all of our conversations, we've taken tours, we've talked to folks that say, yeah, we're only funding, you know, we just need seven million dollars for roads just to maintain
Mm-hmm.
our current level of uh road, you know, um, quality, not even to improve anything. Um, and then we talk about, um, you know, additional projects. The projects come to us with a price tag today, but they don't come to us with a price tag of what it costs us every year to maintain them. And my sense is right now that we're struggling to find the funds to maintain all of the, all of the facilities that we currently have on our roster. And that makes me super nervous to talk about adding new facilities
Mm-hmm.
when I feel like we are not able to adequately maintain the facilities that we have, and so what my interest is here is getting a really good idea of what it costs us to have all these facilities on our roster every year. So that it's predictable, so that we can take that into account when we're trying to look at expanding facilities or adding new facilities, and that it always kind of comes with this, like, what does this add to our yearly maintenance budget, uh, need for the city? So that we look at it more long-term, and we don't end up with every building in our, in our roster needing so much uh attention all the same time in the future. So for me, this is, this is really, I'm really excited to see that number one on there. Um, I, it makes me, I, I'm a little bit, I, I just don't, I like looking at things more holistically, so when I see two, item two and item three pulled out as a separate thing compared to a more like comprehensive plan, that makes me, I, I, I'm, I'm okay with it, but I, I'm a little bit, I, I just prefer to see things more holistically versus two out of the three kind of actions there being, um, being called out specifically when I feel like they're part of a much larger conversation of number one, but I mean, I could, my mind could be changed on that too, so if somebody else has a different perspective. To me, I see it all the same, is all the same thing. It's all number one, as far as I'm concerned.
Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we're in a situation here where we're looking at this and we have them separated out after we had just talked about, we'd like to see it all lumped in. And now we got it all lumped in and we're wanting to separate it back out, now, which I'm fine with, by the way, because each particular thing, and, and Ray brought up earlier, you know, uh, talk, public health, and then we're talking about police stations and, you know, all these different things, but if we were to break them out individually, um, and find the value in each particular item, I think it makes a huge difference. In other words, right now, we're spending four hundred thousand dollars a year to rent buildings, but our police in, and our dispatch center. And if there is a, a viable option out there to move them into one location and literally save the city money, it's, you know, and create another capital investment or whatever, that's a no-brainer, but it's just one piece of it. So to say, a police station, forty million dollars, that's not realistic, that's not what we're gonna spend, and, and if we can get that into an area where we're at the same or less than what we're paying in rent and lease money to pay somebody else's building payments, now we've gotta win. So as we go through each one of these, I think we need to have more information concerning each individual piece so that a, a proper assessment can be made by us instead of one big thing. Because if we're gonna weigh the event center against the police station, against public health, against streets, against, we're never, we're gonna go around in circles and we're gonna beat the hell out of each other in this room, and we're all still gonna leave and be friends, we're not gonna get anything done. So in order to pri- prioritize this stuff appropriately, I think they have to be broken down individually, and, and there has to be an assessment done on each one that shows the value or not in what we're doing. Does that make any sense? I, in my opinion, I think that's the way it's gonna have to happen for this particular group of people, to be able to get their mind wrapped around it and to, to bring a proper assessment to the table concerning each individual item, whether it's street repairs or public health or, or a police station or whatever it is. You know, the event center, we, we could talk about it, we, we subsidize that thing to the max, but I also know it brings in over twenty million dollars to this community every year. That's, so when you break that down and you look at the value we're getting based on the subsidy we're given, it's a no-brainer, right? Public health, if we don't fund it, we're gonna have long-term effects or whatever. I understand that, and I get it. So we have to balance that against state funding. So it's an individual assessment we have to make concerning public health, the police station, the streets. To me, these need to be broken out, Carter, um, in order for us to understand in order for us to understand the implications and the ramifications of the money we're spending and the return we're getting on investment. I mean, if we don't take care of the streets, we're going to be driving on dirt roads pretty soon or have potholes we lose our vehicles in, right? So, you know, e- each one of these, in my opinion, need to be broken down, shown the value and/or lack of value in the funding situation when it comes to it. That's my opinion, but in order for me personally, being an economics guy, to make those kind of decisions, I think we have to, we have to break them out and pull them out separately, dissect them, and find out where the value lies. Just an opinion.
Councilwoman Engbrider.
So, I just have a question, so I'm just kind of thinking, so, some buildings do not generate revenue, so how would they, for this building, how do they show value? Because, I mean, you're asking them to put that together, but I'm, I'm not sure how I would get that done. You know, so, I mean, the event center, Hoganon, things of that nature, health center, I mean, you've got tangible numbers, I don't know how.
But they're not really tangible numbers, if you're asking me, right?
Yeah, no, I was just asking.
Because they're, most of them are losers, they're, they're services that we provide for our constituents. Hoganon doesn't make money, the event center doesn't make money, the ice rink doesn't make money, I mean, we have a lot of things that don't make money that we fund, leisure activities, streets, whatever it is. So, tangible number-wise, it's, it's really not going to help you, what you have to do is find out where the value is in the city building. We've got to have this building, we have to have the, the infrastructure to run the city, and you've got to have a place for people to go in order to facilitate that. That's where the value of this particular building comes from. And you probably have to break down each individual building and find out exactly what asset that brings to the city, what tangible good is that doing for us? Every one of them have a, an asset to them or we wouldn't have them, we wouldn't be using them, so that's why I'm saying, if we break them out individually and find out exactly what benefit is that bringing to the city, what value is it bringing us, what value is it not bringing us? And so that we can make more informed decisions concerning each one. In my opinion, if you just, if you do across-the-board thing, like, I think the city's done for many, many, many years, you're not really getting to the nuts and bolts of it, you're not really finding out what the tangible asset or, or red mark against us it is. I don't know, what, Carter, does that make sense to you?
Well, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All of you are, are bringing up excellent points about this really complex Gregorian knot that you all have to unravel, right? And the challenge is, very few of these facilities are going to be facilities that at the end of the day are going to be like, man, let's take that off the inventory stock and not have to spend any money on it. You're not going to find that result, probably, you know? However, some of these facilities do have an element of complexity to them that require additional analysis. The wastewater treatment plant, for example. There, there's, there's quite a bit engaged in there that the assessment at the very beginning of the, this particular goal statement will not adequately cover in, in the scope of that project. With regard to the police department, we've gone through quite a bit of analysis in that facility that I would not suggest including in that assessment because we have taken it apart almost brick by brick in terms of trying to understand whether it can be used as a, into the future or not, you know, and, and those kinds of things. Fire stations, the same way. Streets is, is one that we really want to understand where you want to be from a grade perspective, if you will, we're at an F right now, as we all know.
Well, not an F.
Something better than F.
I would suggest not an F.
We, we, I think we all agree on that, yeah. And, and so that requires a specific analysis that we need to understand in, in different detail. So, without a doubt, at the end of the day, what we want to provide you is a quantification of what each of those facilities look like, what each of their needs are, and, and, and for certain, there's going to be different scales that that detail will include. And, and that's because it, it's hard to group the, the facilities together in some cases and, and not break some out in others. Because the complexities are just, are just too rich, you know? But what we do think we'll be able to provide you that you've never had before is at least that compendium that says, if you do this for the next fifteen years, you should be able to fund the repair at this cost. If that cost remains static, right? For the wastewater treatment plant, we've got a few other things we've got to do, however, because that's a pretty big number two. But there's also a number of other complexities that we've got to deal with that, that are just further and above, say, repairing City Hall, right?
Well, please keep in mind, we don't have to go from an F to an A.
Right.
We can go, we can go from an F to a D and then work on going from a D to a C, just like we would with a child. It, it takes time and it takes effort and it takes money, and so, it, it's, it's a slow process and we can undertake a whole lot of things and do it the right way, we just, it's just going to take a lot of information, a lot of time, and a lot of collaboration, I'm afraid.
Well, then, and to piggyback onto that about the streets is if we don't start taking care of the Ds and the Cs, they will become Fs, and when you hit the F, your price went up exponentially to even get that back to anything because then you have to get into the subgrade and everything else. Where if you go ahead and repair them when they're Cs, you can bring them back up at probably a third of the cost if we allow them to get into the Ds and the Fs, so that's the other part of what Carter's talking about is needing to look into these things. And you were talking about, and the reason I bring that up is you were talking about adding value. I don't know if that is adding value the way you talk about a building, but that is decreasing our long-term operational cost. Because instead of having to spend seven million a year to maintain our level, we're going to have to be spending ten million to try to maintain that if we keep underspending, and so that's where the long-term, it just, your rent just starts doing this to you on the streets. And on the other facilities as well.
In my mind, value equates to dollars.
Okay.
But he was valuing it in different, and that's where I was like
Yeah.
trying to calculate dollars.
But, and that's the same thing with the building maintenances and everything else, yeah.
Councilmember Pollak.
Uh, Richard, my hand raises.
Are we done with one?
Uh, one, 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 one other very, 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 very minute detail. Ah, come on. There we go. If you go to page three, in the second line of the italics, there under B, there should be an S on objective.
Knock it off.
I read these things.
Councilman Gammel.
I'm a terrible reader, but I read literally.
I guess to read a rate, Councilwoman Pollak's earlier, well, statements, I guess, totally agree on the one. I am curious to know why two and three were pulled out. Like, maybe it's just because they're, again, big, significant, and maybe, like you said, we've already done some needs assessment, facility assessment stuff, so maybe that's why it wasn't as part of this, but that's something I would be curious about, because I, yeah, I, I agree, the, the needs assessment is something we absolutely need and just to be more informed going forward. In regards to the police department, I guess while we're still on one, well, I guess, no, not actually, I was kind of misreading it earlier, so I guess I don't have a further question.
Councilmember Pollak.
I, I might, and it might be kind of what Kyle is talking about, I'm, I'm just trying to, this is more like a semantics question, I think, but, like, I'm looking at buildings and facilities, and we've got this facilities assessment, and then we have these two specific projects, and then down below, big subheading, we've got wastewater treatment plant, which is a facility, is it not? So I'm trying to understand why that sort of, like, that's its own thing versus the police department and Marathon Building being in with like, the larger overall building of the facility, so maybe that's why, like, I just, I'm wondering, does it make sense, more sense for me in my brain to see that as its, as a wastewater treatment plant, and
Yeah, maybe the formatting was just thrown in there.
I think that's what's like, maybe throwing me off, like, streets, police department, wastewater facility. I'm just trying to understand why, why we've put police facility and Marathon Building in like a, as a sub-project under like a larger project and then pulled some of them out. So, maybe there's a reason for it, I'm just not sure.
Isn't, isn't that because the police and the Marathon would wind up at a general fund money and the wastewater treatment plant is an enterprise fund that is supposed to be a standalone?
Okay, okay, that would make sense.
Or that's what I assumed it was anyhow, the reason it was broke out.
I'm co, I'm happy with that explanation, as long, as long as they're, like, just so that I can understand how it's organized.
No, like, like I said, that was, that was, that was why I figured it was, is because the, the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant and the bail fill landfill are all enterprise funds which are supposed to be paid for by their rate settings where the police, the Marathon Building, all of those come out of the, the general fund money.
Sure.
I mean.
These are all, again, good questions, and, and the fact is, we, we can format this however you like, whatever makes the most sense, honestly, and so please be aware of that. The reality is, though, I, I would not waste your money, including the police facility, in this assessment because it has been assessed to death.
Yeah.
Okay, and so, you, you, you don't need to assess that building again. Same with fire stations. You do not need to assess fire stations. They, they, five of them are practically brand-new, I mean, not totally, but practically. One of them, we have assessed to death as well, Station One. And so, I, I assure you, including them in one A would, would not make any sense for your money. And believe it or not, we still have eighty other buildings that you could look at. And that's the ironic, amazing, astounding thing for me, I cannot believe we have that many buildings. But we do. As far as wastewater treatment plant is concerned, if you'll look through that, that particular discussion, you should not take it to mean that wastewater will not be included in the assessment, however, we do know, based on assessments we've already done with wastewater, that we've got a couple things on our imminent sort of horizon that we have got to deal with. And if we don't start setting that as a pretty important goal right now, we're going to miss the boat. So, some, some stuff takes some breakout analysis that you, that, you know, we've got to pay attention to. Some stuff will absolutely be captured in the overall assessment, we're suggesting both needs to be done.
Councilman Gammel Ross.
Unless anyone has anything further on one, you kind of segued into wastewater treatment. So, in that summary, it talks about the plant will likely be given permit limits to reduce nutrients like phosphate nitro, nitrogen and selenium. I guess I'm, is that regulatory guidelines that we know are probably coming down the pipeline, and so we're trying to be proactive, is that what's, okay? And it's all fed, it's, it's above state, okay?
Yes.
So, I mean, it's, it's essentially outside our control and just something we're trying to be proactive about?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Mr. Mayor, that's true, but that's not to say that the DEQ couldn't have a role in this in making it worse for us. Without a doubt, the DEQ has a lot of cards in this game too, and so, keep an eye on all their involvement would, would really help us as well.
Would that be considered an unfunded mandate, Carter? I mean, literally, right? Because the feds are the ones that are going to, you have to do it, but they're not going to pony up any money, we've got to fund it.
You know, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, we, we are hopeful that we'll be able
Was that a bad question?
No. We are hopeful that we'll be able to access funds that will enable us to do it. Chances are, it won't cover the bill. And so, without a doubt, we are going to look for those funds and try to access them, but I'm not optimistic that, that that'll be our panacea, if you will. It, it's a fair question, very fair question.
It's like, what's going on with the UV?
Yeah.
Disinfection of the water treatment? And we've got to have that through, we are already under orders to have that done by twenty-eight. And that's what, twenty-one million?
Okay.
Just for that?
Anything else on?
The water treatment plant?
Yeah, just, it's twenty-one million for the UV?
Councilman Gammel.
Yeah, on the stormwaters, uh, stormwater system, like I said earlier, not well understood by the public, I would include myself in that, I don't understand it. I don't know what stormwater infrastructure looks like, what it entails, and it kind of blows my mind that we've only been funding it at two percent of what, you know, twenty, we're, we're, we're paying twenty thousand, which seems nothing, and it needs a million, so, yeah, we're essentially not funding it, in my opinion.
Pretty much.
So, you know, maybe it, it doesn't matter, I'm curious how it got so bad. Is there any other, any other responsibilities of our city that is so drastically underfunded, such as this? I don't, I, I, again, maybe it's not important to know why we got here, but I am curious where we go from here, because we're essentially creating all of that funding out of nowhere, it seems to me.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Gammel Ross, the, the, the conundrum that we deal with with stormwater always is, and, and it doesn't matter what community you're in, stormwater is not a priority until you are swimming in a flood. You know, I, I mean, it just, it's, it's unseen and therefore not even believable that it's there, you know? Until you've got your store flooding or, or, you know, your car floating down the road because of some sort of issue, you know? So, yes, we have underfunded it, we probably deserve an F for that too. We haven't done that kind of analysis, but I would suggest that's probably the answer to the quiz. The goal here is suggesting that now that we have the legislative authority to deal with this as a utility,
Yes.
we're proposing that that be given some legs, that idea. And, and the goal is to, to evaluate this very, very seriously and consider it in your tenure. So, so we're trying to give an answer to it. We think that that utility could provide the right operational funding to deal with it in an appropriate manner. Can I answer a question about streets, though, that went unanswered? Is that all right, Mr. Mayor?
I had a question about stormwater, when you get done with it, go ahead with the streets.
Okay, thank you. What we hope to provide you with respect to streets is what that incremental cost would look like in order to elevate your grade. Okay, so, we, we, we don't have that yet, but the, the product that you should expect to get is kind of a, a menu. If you want to elevate from a fifty-nine, which if you remember in grade school, was very clearly an F.
We're fifty-six, aren't we?
It's a high F.
I, I didn't get many Fs, thank heavens, but, but it is, I trust.
Ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty.
If we want to get to, say, like, a C average, this is what it's going to cost you, if you want to get to a D average, this is what it's going to cost you, and here are the projects that you probably are going to need to do, and so on. So that, that's what we hope that the deliverable will be with regard to that particular, that question.
While you're on that subject, can you provide something in there too, that if we just stay at our F, then what it's going to look like, say, in three years to be able to get to that D or the C?
That's a great question.
Because that's, that's the other side of it that I was talking about, is because if we don't stop the water encroaching into the subgrade
Basically, nothing, right?
Yeah, then basically, you wind up at the point that instead of having to come in there and say mill an overlay, you've actually got to come in, totally strip out all of it, take out some of the dirt, recompact it, basically rebuild the road from scratch, and that's what I was talking about, is that if we don't spend the money, that cost starts going up exponentially then, because you wind up with more and more roads needing that type of a repair rather than a mill and overlay or a chip seal.
Senator Landon was speaking to that, from this, Senator Landon at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon was speaking to that issue as well, from the state perspective, talking about, you know, all these roads built in the fifties and sixties, the subgrade, it's beyond, you know, you're obviously more in that realm than I am, but, it's an issue, yeah?
That was part of where my education was, civil engineer, we try to be nice. The other question that I had, that was why I initially stuck my hand up about stormwater, on the river restoration, are we dealing with the Bureau of Land Management or are we dealing with BuRec?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, typically it's Bureau of Rec, they, they have a lot of implication Uh, Mister Mayor, uh, Councilman, typ- typically it's Bureau of Rec, they, they have a lot of implication with respect to-
Cause our, our letter here said Bureau of Land Management, that's what-
But, but they are also partners as well, absolutely, so we, we've got multiple partnerships.
Okay.
Um, BLM is certainly one of them, you, you betcha, yeah, absolutely.
Well, it just surprised me when we were talking about Two Fly, Gamin Fish, County Weed, and then Bureau of Land Management. I was figuring that Bure Rec probably had a bigger impact on, with us having to work around their flows and everything than BLM.
That, and that's true, Gamin Fish is another huge, huge partner for us.
Absolutely, cause it flushing the beds for the-
Yep, you got it.
Okay, anything else on river restoration?
They're talking about doing a flush this year.
Okay, digital infrastructure? You're up, Kyle. Recreation investment.
At least until we get to around the table, then I get funded.
All right, we'll move on to business investment. Anybody?
Is that the one we got today? Was that the one we got today? Yeah, I didn't get that one.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You didn't get that one, is that what you said?
No, my email came in at eleven fifty-nine and between about ten o'clock this morning and when I walked in here, I had no email service.
Okay, we can provide you-
Oh, I've got it now, oh.
Thanks very much.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, I have parts of all of my days I have no-
Okay, we'll move on to citizen engagement, Vice Mayor.
The only thing I had to say about citizen engagement, 'cause I think it's one of the more critical, uh, aspects as far as how we get our message out and trying to do those things. You know, I, one of the, the things that, uh, I think the chief has, has been pretty blessed with a pretty awesome public information officer. Um, I think she does a fantastic job. Um, you know, I think that down the road, 'cause I know Jolene does a lot of the press releases and having to do that, I think at some point the city's gonna have to look at hiring, and I know we can't have that conversation, obviously, since we just got out of this mud fight of, you know, budget stuff earlier, so. But I think at some point, we're, we, I think that it would serve the city well if we did have a full-time PIO, um, to be able to do that. And I know that's been a conversation topic for many years, since I first started on council, but I think that would help out quite a bit, 'cause I know how much it serves the chief and, and how well Rebecca does, and that speaks highly of her too, so. Anyway, just, just food for thought for citizen engagement, I think that that's an important aspect to, to do that.
Well, let me just add on to that argument, either not an argument, but the point is that, uh, all during COVID when we had those press releases, it was Rebecca that ran the show up there and did an outstanding job, so I agree with you, I think that we definitely need to look at, at that for the city itself. Councilman Gamroth.
Totally agree, I think Rebecca does an amazing job, is she fully at the police department? Okay, I thought there was discussion way back when she was hired that it would be half city, half police or something like that, but, thank you.
We lent her out.
Okay, well, we appreciate it, she does a great job.
Limited basis. Uh, Mister Mayor, if I could, we, we, we do view your adoption of this goal, um, as, um, you know, some direction to look at staffing more, more thoroughly than we have in the past. And so if, if you do adopt this, we, we, we do believe that would be an entree for that concept, if you will, from an operational standpoint.
Any other comments? Councilmember Pollock?
I'll just add that this is, was one of my highest priorities when we were, um, when I came on to council and we were discussing, I think that there is, um, there's a lot of, of room to find ways to be engaging with citizens more and more effectively and in a way that is, um, that is, you know, a more two-way, that two-way conversation, like the, uh, consultant earlier was saying, I think that the, the, uh, citizens are really hungry for that, um, and I think that it's a great way for us to, to build a platform for ourselves to, to foster engagement and like productive ways of conversation and communicating and getting in, involved with local government. So I, I think it's, I think it's a, a really high priority, 'cause that makes all of these conversations easier when we have more channels for input and po- and, you know, productive input from citizens, so we don't have to try to suppose what people want and what's most important to folks, so, um, so I think it's really important and I, I, I'm glad to see this in here.
Councilwoman, woman here, Amy Brett.
That's been so long, Dan. Um, so, I guess one of the things is part of public citizen engagement. As as council members probably should know of all the social media that's out there that's related to the city, I am having to comb through Facebook and stuff and, for instance, the Casper MPO, I had no idea. And so it's accidentally stumbling on them, and so if we as city council members do not even know about all of the Facebook pages and things that we're familiar with, how is the citizen supposed to find all of this? I mean, it's almost impossible for me to just kind of go through and, I don't even know how many pages, but I would really like for somebody to give me some ideas so that I could follow it and understand what's going on and, and share the information, because that's kind of part of it, is that's marketing. So I see something that's pertinent, then I share it out to the public and things of that nature, I see Kyle does that, and, I mean, it's just kind of one of those things. So, I mean, I, I think it would start here, if we could just have that information.
Mister Mayor, Councilman, I think that's a fair point, and, and frankly, I think we do need, need to do a little consolidation because we've got a lot of departments and divisions that would love to have all their own and, and probably do, and maybe even enterprise, uh, the creation of those that, you know, like I'm not familiar with or whatever, so I, I think that's a, a worthy exercise and probably will result in some consolidation and the burning down of silos.
Anything else, Member Pollock?
Um, I, I wonder if we might capture a little bit more significantly in this objective to the, uh, the, a sub-objective in, in addition to citizen engagement, but to really, um, build a digital presence for our community. So that, that is outward facing, and that there is an identity to it, that there is, um, there's, you know, all of the things that you do when you're building sort of a brand, like the city has a brand and it's got a, it's got an identity and it's got a story that we want to tell, not just to ourselves, but also to folks who may be looking us up or maybe come ac- coming across us. And so I, I think, um, if we can add that, it, it may be captured partially in here, but I, I wanna make sure that it's not just about communicating with citizens and, and developing a channel for communication, I think it's also about developing our identity and pushing that out in a, in a digital world.
Councilman Gamroth?
Amber, would, uh, are you familiar with Chief's Casper, the website?
I am.
Okay, I was just curious, um, what difference, how would, how would it be different?
Um, I-
Go about it in a different way.
Yeah, I, I think the, the way I'm seeing it is this is a, this is the, the city government's entity itself having an identity and pushing it out, so, I mean, I think it could certainly operate like in tandem, um, but I, I think that, um, the, the city as an entity has a different platform than that coalition and that partnership might, potentially different reach, different capabilities. So I think that, that the, the city shouldn't allow a n- a, a separate entity to be its only, its only, uh, face on, on, on the web. So I think that we need our own internal face as well, and, uh, you know, hopefully those, those things will, will align and communicate with one another well because some really great work went in, has gone into, um, Chief's Casper, and I think that, I think that there would be, you know, synergy and those things could certainly like, um, work together, but I, I think that the, the city needs its own, it's got the reins of it, and it can steer it in the direction it wants to go.
Would you say that reaches for the city would be more for the citizens as opposed to Chief's Casper? I think it's more drawn towards people that we're trying to bring to Casper.
I think more, more for the, more for the s- more internally, yeah, more for the, more for the citizens, it's not, I'd, I'm not suggesting that perhaps the city's Facebook page will be a great tourism generating tool or something like that, but, but I do think like having an online identity, that then all of those agencies can reference. Like there is, there is an identity that is clearly defined and that we, that we, it's, it's consistent across, you know, all, all of our platforms, it's consistent across all of our agencies, um, and this is how we, how we interact with our, our folks and the face we put out to the world. And then, you know, that the other folks who are responsible for generating business and who are responsible for generating tourism, they've got like a foundation to refer back to, uh, directly to the city.
Councilman now?
I just wonder, listening to Councilwoman Pollock, if that isn't something we couldn't incorporate into our three-one-one? Because, you know, we've got so much information that comes out of Casper, whether it's through Advance Casper or Visit Casper or, you know, there's a plethora of, of places you can go, but the three-one-one is specifically designed for our constituents to have direct contact with our city departments, whether it's a pothole or, you know, whatever it is. So I'm, I'm just wondering if we couldn't somehow maybe incorporate a, something into that page that's already set up for our people to allow.
That's actually part of the plan.
Oh, there you go.
I think, yeah, three-one-one's an awesome, awesome tool.
You can see I didn't read it.
Kristen, Kristen pointed that out to me, so.
I was just thinking, uh, trying to piggyback off, uh, Amber, so.
I had read that. Are we ready to move on to the next one?
Uh, yeah, I think that was it.
That was the last one.
Then I wanna back up. Well, I just saw the business investment, so I had a question about that. Uh, that third one down there, that annual report of Casper snapshot, how much do you think that's gonna take time-wise? Because reading through there, we already have the income, building permit data comes out every month from community development. We don't have the property sales, lodging tax, we don't deal with at all, that goes straight to the lodging board. Excise tax, do we even have an excise tax, that's one I wasn't familiar with. Employment rates come out from the state every month. There isn't a lot here that we aren't already getting on a monthly basis. So I was just, just curious.
Uh, Mister Mayor, Councilman Kathy, again, a very, very fair question. You know, the, the, the challenge that we have is that communicating with our business community, um, on a regular basis really doesn't exist right now. And so, um, we're looking for a means to engage our business community so that indeed, hopefully, the return would be that they would communicate with us.
Okay.
And, and let us know what we need to be doing in order to give them the lift they need to be successful.
Okay.
Now, without a doubt, that, that is not the silver bullet to make all that happen, right? I mean, that's just a, it's, it's a small attempt.
Until COVID hit, I know like the chamber, for example, I'm the liaison to the chamber, and until COVID hit, they were getting those building reports every month, they were getting those other reports every month, and so that's getting it out at least to the chamber members if they're participating, so.
And maybe they'd be a, a good partner to make this happen, you know, that, that could very well be.
Yeah, maybe. Okay. I will take that to them too and see how much they feel some of the rest of these things will help them out.
Perfect.
Very good, and by the way, if you're gonna force all of us to get, uh, Facebook, the day that happens, my resignation will be on your table.
To hire Steve to run the Facebook.
I delete them like every other month, so, I'll be right there with you.
I was just finding out how much, how difficult it really is.
TikTok, yes. Oh, me too.
I was just curious how that would be different than, um, kind of what we're doing now, like, for instance, the phone call you got and I got yesterday and Amber was involved in. You know, when they, when a business person needs something, they generally reach out to one of us or, or multiple of us. So I'm just curious if this is really a viable thing, because it's, it's kind of already happens in its own, um, I guess, prehistoric kind of way, if you will.
Mister Mayor, Councilman, I, you know, um, we, we are looking at ways and trying to have a more, a more fluid relationship with our business community. And, uh, and, and that may, you know, that, that, that may not be the right answer, or it may be a, a right answer to a number of right answers that need to occur too. Um, but I, you know, I don't feel as though that interconnectivity with our business community is what it should be. And, and I, and I, and I think that's what I'm hearing from our business community. And, and certainly I want them to know that if there's things they need, not only can they call you guys, but they can call us and say, wow, if the city would just do X, we would be so much more successful. And then I'd say, hey, that's a great idea, and I'd run it through you guys, we'd come up with that idea and, and make it happen. Uh, tha- that's all, that's all this attempts to try to do, you know? And maybe we need to do more, I, I'm sure that's true, you know?
And what's it, food trucks?
Maybe this isn't necessary, but I had coffee this morning with a business owner who, um, you know, said the city has gotten better over the years, but they have multiple bad, um, you know, instances of not a good re- working relationship with the city. So as early as this morning, I had, you know, coffee with a business owner that, um, felt like the city wasn't, you know, um, having enough communication and stuff, so I would absolutely advocate, you know, whatever we can do for that. Um, even just, you know, we talk about the, uh, like the building report, I, I'd be curious to know what the chamber does with it. Um, 'cause my impression has been that the city goes above and beyond to provide all of this information, and it's so overwhelming, you know, our packets are three to six hundred pages or something like that every week, people won't sift through that, our meetings are three hours, you know, coming up on three hours this evening, most people aren't gonna watch that, and so, um, maybe in line with what we were talking about earlier with a, with a PIO, I know we can't afford to do nothing, but I would just love to, I th- I think we have the information, I would just love to see us as a city repackage it and maybe as Councilwoman Pollock was saying, just, um, you know, do a better job creating a city identity and community and communicating that outward. I, I don't know if any of y'all would've, would've saw, I, I published something on Sunday that was just, uh, the building report. Uh, I just did a five-minute video on the building report and posted it to my council Facebook page, and I feel like that, um, packaging it in that way, people are more, much more apt to watch a five-minute video on the building report than go find it, it's on page nine on, uh, the April seventeenth information packet, if you're curious. But, um, most people aren't gonna go find it in the information packet, and so, um, it's just the one video, I'm gonna keep trying them, see if people like them, but, um, I'd love to see the city do some stuff in that vein, you know, just repackaging what information we already have into a format that people find more convenient or more entertaining or, um, whatever, so, thank you.
Councilmember Pollock?
Yeah, I, I agree, to, to me, a lot of this stuff is more like the backend stuff, and we don't really have front-end stuff. So the backend is like all the, if you really wanna dig and wanna find the nuts and bolts and wanna see it like, cool, but for a lot of people, like, they need like a, the user-friendly, like, it's just like the backend of an app, like, it's a mess, the frontend. It's super easy and you just, you know, it, it makes a really easy, easy user interface, and we don't have, like, you know, a press release is not a, not a front-end communication, that's the backend, right, that's for the press to be able to create a, a story out of, right? Uh, we've got, we've got the, the city council work packet, like, that's kind of the backend of it, and we, we need to find a way to, to translate that into things that are user-friendly for citizens to actually, to actually use their advantage, for business owners to actually use their advantage. I'm sure all those r- reports exist, but like who's, who's looking at all of them every month? Not that many people, so, you know, it's, it's somebody's job to like consolidate that into like the most pertinent, most useful stuff, sift through it all and get it out in a way that's user-friendly.
Councilman now?
I do know that, that some of the press, you know, with the articles they put out, give quite a bit of information too.
Yeah.
You know, that's where our public gets a lot of our stuff, um, Well City and, you know, Star, whatever, but I know when they go on to read that, they get a kind of a good gist of what we're doing. But, you know, aside from that, I think you're right, I think we need something more, maybe that puts our tweets on the headline. Although I definitely don't think all the headlines are always correct, that's why I think we should have ours.
Most people don't read beyond the headline.
Exactly.
Cause we're a lot of them stop.
Yeah.
Correct.
Go straight to the comments, I guess.
Correct.
That's a good stuff.
Yep.
Video though, people watch video, so.
They do.
I mean, that's
You should just TikTok it.
Yeah, just TikTok it. TikTok the building report. But maybe it is, you know, online Q and As with department heads or, you know, I I don't know what it looks like, but I I think we could absolutely be doing better in that regard.
Okay. Any other comments on this topic? All right. So I think direction wise, I think we had a couple of things in there as far as looking at how to get from F to F plus. And uh
Maybe steps.
Yeah, that's right.
And then, you know, what those costs would look like projected out. We could maybe get that. That'd be great.
That's a plan.
Okay. Anything else on this? All right. We'll move on to agenda review. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as far as the gender review goes, if I could direct your attention to the grid documents that is attached to your it should be a part of your packet. Um, a couple of things to bring your attention. For pre-meeting next week, we do want to review with you the operational budget for CATC. And as you probably have picked up on, it won't be called CATC anymore, actually. Uh, we're proposing a rebranding effort that would be consistent with it coming into the city's an operational entity of the cities.
Yeah. Along those lines, what did the survey show?
The survey?
You gave us three choices amongst the council.
Oh, that survey. Do you mind if I ask please?
Sure.
Casper area link for the fixed route.
Okay.
And then we um also during the interviews with um the various employees that we were searching got there and put to. And so they were in sync with the majority view and the graphics. So we reached out to the drivers that will be operating the fixed route. So Casper area link for fixed route and then Casper area assist shall be the door to door.
Thank you. Yeah, I had not seen, maybe you missed an email, but I was curious.
Your Honor, no, we were, we had just finished it up last Friday with the interviews.
Oh, okay.
So that that should give you a lot of insight into what it is that we're, you know, you you will see coming forward. Now, we we wanted to break this out a little more specifically, rather than include it in the entirety delivery of the budget report because it is new, it it is a unique feature now that that we, you know, are going to be incorporating for the first time into uh into the city's ongoing budget. So we did want to give that a little more attention for you to ask questions about and so on. Uh, as it relates to some of these other things that you that you have in on your agenda document here, I would probably want to take you to the next work session, which is on the eleventh. Again, a lot of uh a lot of conversations that are very, very timely for us right now, one of which would be the results of the Sixth Sense survey that we've conducted among our our constituents, your constituents, if you will. And and I think you'll be interested to see what those results are. We do have to tentatively deliver the budget. It says the budget to council. It's not really the budget. It's more of a of a statutorily required short statement of the budget, if you will. Again, to to meet the requirements of of the state. You're you're going to get quite a bit more with regard to what that delivery actually looks like when when that time comes, which would be the following week, actually. And as you can see, uh, on your document just beneath that work session, we do have three days set aside. The eighteenth, of course, is your regular regular business meeting that we could ostensibly deal with some budget items if you chose to. Wednesday is typically when we come back to you with follow up items on budget things that you wanted to see more clarification about or want more conversation on, um, and so on. So, you know, generally speaking, those three days can be used for prostrary purposes of of many kinds. The first day of which, however, will be the the uh, you know, the biggest delivery and report provision that that you'll get of that period of time. And then, as usual, we'd like to direct your attention to the far back page that gives you a feel for what the doc it looks like into the near future here. And of course, some of these are unassigned and and we're always open to having you make assignments along those lines as well. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else got anything on that? All right, legislative review, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you should have a report in front of you in hard copy today. It gives you kind of a summary with respect to the legislative activities of our of our session that just ended. The uh, the the spreadsheet looking document in the back is kind of a a recap of a number of the items that you supported in As for WAM's agenda space four, if you will. And you can see kind of how that all went and where they ended up and what happened and and everything else. This includes no movement at all. It includes actual passage. And then it includes kind of a report as to where it stalled, even though it got some discussion. The first page, however, is a more thorough review of some of the activities of our legislators that that were out there and what they did for us. Some of the uh, a more in-depth review of things that were actually engrossed into law. And um, and again, the a lot of those conversations started started right here. And that's kind of kind of neat to follow, in my opinion. Conversations start here and in some cases end up in statewide law. It's neat to see. And and frankly, I appreciate your support to make that happen because a lot of these ideas are very helpful to us.
Councilmember Pollock.
Carter, on the uh SF seventeen, thought I saw somewhere that that had been proposed as an interim topic. Did I misread that or is that did I not read through? Was that near the the interim, the uniform financial transparency in every government entity?
Is that not on the sheet?
It's here. Um, it doesn't list it as having made it into the interim.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you. I believe you're correct. I believe that that did get assigned for an interim topic. And uh, there are quite a few of these actually that are also assigned as interim topics as well. Jolene, can you give us a real quick review of what some of those topics are that we're looking forward to discussing in inter- in the interim?
There's going to be some redistricting. There's some business council stuff. The one that disappoints me the most is the New York Council, sorry, trying to have a conversation with Carter and thinking about you. The one that disappoints me the most is the solid waste remediation credit one that we have been pushing on, pushing on. We asked for it to be an interim topic. Senator Anderson did take it on as an interim topic. The management council removed it as an interim topic. Trying to think of, there were a few others, but I didn't memorize all the interim topics.
Municipal financing is one.
That's that's coming back on there, yes.
Yep.
And there, place that we're going to go to try and and get more on in in the committees. I'm I'm sorry, that I don't have it memorized.
Fire Fund Day is also another interim topic that we've talked about if this
The pension?
Yes. Yep. Yep. That that will be an interim topic as well.
Thank you. Anything else on that? Okay, we'll go council around the table. Councilmember Pollock.
I toured with um the O I D um yesterday. We um hopped on a bus and toured all of the projects that are currently going on, um, the O I D in in regards to roads, um, and then looked at some of the building improvements that have been made over the course of the last year there. So it was nice to see multiple projects underway there, um, some good some good uh things happening in that area. And I think that's all I have today.
Councilwoman Loos.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Kathy.
I think we all got a copy of it, but uh wanted to bring up the uh email we got about the stop sign at First and Elk and removing the east-west stop signs on First Street since uh the school is no longer a school. And make then First Street straight through, but leave the north-south stop signs on Elk. And then uh, I noticed Mr. Beamer writing that one down. And then uh, have a CPU meeting in the morning at seven.
All right, Councilman Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things. Uh, one, be Abate will be doing their ride this weekend um with the help of our police department. Four hundred and some bikes, uh, out doing a biker awareness run through town. Uh, the police will be helping them facilitate that. They did file for their permit. And uh, so they'll be doing that on Saturday. I had a a, I I just want to throw this out there, Carter. Um, there's some of us or the mayor actually is doing most of the work on this, but I did have a recommendation from one of our prominent business owners downtown to ask for uh the no overnight parking being removed completely on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays in the summertime. Uh, down in the downtown area. That law gets used by the office, Rockers, Urban Bottle, Gaslight, DSS, Rock the Block Art Works. And uh, without allowing overnight parking, they feel that it will promote drunk driving if they are not allowed to leave their vehicles. And I understand there's going to be some um uh, construction in that area. And so it does pose a slight problem, but if we could put a, you know, a moratorium on them until ten AM and uh give them time to go home sober and come back, get their car, whatever, I think that would be a win for everybody. And it's a good way for for both sides to be appeased. So um, uh, there was something else.
Construction just started on those parking lots.
Yeah, I noticed that for the state building. I think it's going to be a building or whatever. Lastly, I wanted to apologize to you because um I know you're trying to run a meeting and oftentimes we're all just thrown out there without being recognized. And I think I've kind of spearheaded that activity with this particular group and I'd like to apologize for it. And I'll make sure that uh that I'm recognized before I take the floor again. So maybe that'll help your meetings run a little smoother.
I appreciate it. It it does help out to be able to point yourself at you and not get cut off.
And lastly, I was going to make sure the council got to meet Jill because I don't think everybody's got to, but she left the room. So I was going to remind you to make sure they get to know who she is. So I don't know if she'll be back or not, but anyways, that's all I have and thank you.
Councilwoman Ingris.
I said in my piece earlier about Facebook.
Councilman Johnson.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Gamros.
Thanks, Councilman Kathy, for bringing that road up. I'm I meant to bring it up e- earlier, so I would like to explore it. Wanted to thank Jason and the rest of the crew at the Chamber of Commerce for hosting the post legislative luncheon last week. Also Representatives Sweeney and O'Hern and Senators Scott and Landon for their attendance. Really great event to get in touch with your local legislators and to hear about the work that was done or not done while in session. So uh, next week, the chamber will rerecognize in local businesses for their excellence in business awards ceremony. That's next Wednesday, so if you don't have tickets, uh, might consider it. I also wanted to thank the Fort Casper Museum Association for inviting me to their board meeting last Thursday, as well as giving me a tour of the facility. To repeat uh Councilman Nelson's comments last week, it was, yeah, really enlightening to hear about all the good work they're doing, especially as it pertains to the collection and preservation of, um, you know, Casper's history and identity. So uh, they're extremely passionate and uh have a dedicated network of volunteers and donors. And so um, just want to thank them all as well. And then we mentioned it earlier, but the uh ceremony over the weekend for uh retired police officer Jacob Carlson and current officer Randy Garrett, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, um, both received the Congressional page badge of bravery and was presented uh by Senator Brass over the weekend. So until I have, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Mayor Pacheco.
Thank you. Uh, just to tag along, um, I was able to um fill in for the mayor at that ceremony. And uh, the mayor wrote a very um nice speech that I delivered on his behalf. And so I was able to do that. And it was much more poignant that Steve, the mayor, did that because obviously he served as a police officer for twenty-one years here in Casper, so much more those words are much more meaningful coming from him than they would have been from even myself, so that's for sure. So it was an honor to do that for for those two. And I was mayor when that happened. And I still remember when Carter called me I was grocery shopping. And it was not a, it was a horrible day, but uh it certainly, I've been blessed all around. So anyway, I appreciate the mayor asking me to do that. It was an honor to do that. Thank you, Chief. CATC board meeting, we went uh on Monday. Um, I'm assuming this is getting close to one of the last ones that we're having here. And and uh Liz was there. And then uh Lisa also came and she was a great support. I guess I, I don't I'll just chalk it up as an opportunity that we had to answer some questions. And they were very pointed questions, is what I will leave it at that. And we did our best to answer what we could. And stood by that uh, the decision that we made is good and it's a good for the city of Casper. And so um, I felt like that was a good opportunity. I don't know if you want to say anything, Lisa. I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
No, it was
Yep. Okay. Moving on. Uh, so uh, let's see, a couple of things coming on. I do have the uh Casper Council for people with disabilities next Thursday. Um, I think that's this Thursday, sorry. See, I I even got this notebook here to even keep me organized. This Thursday, so I'll be doing that at eleven thirty. Uh, so hopefully I'll be able to do that. And then, that's all I got.
All right. Thanks. And I just want to thank uh Red for filling in for me this weekend and delivering the speech. I appreciate you doing that. Um, Facebook will be required immediately.
I did remember the one thing I forgot. I wanted to uh pay close attention to the debate we had tonight. The amount of passion and spirit involved, the way it was handled. Um, we have a lot of tough decisions to come. I I appreciate the way we all work together and listen to each other and respect each other. And so I wanted to thank you all for that because I think it's important that that be said. So.
All right. That's all I got except for then Councilman Kathy was quick.
Okay.
And Councilman Loos.
Could I have a place to put my beat now?
Anybody else who wants to sign up on that, more than welcome.
Yeah, every time I go to hire, I'm always like, oh, look up about social media.